Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's Wednesday, March 20th, about 7:00 PM, and this is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Wareham School Committee. I'd like to begin with a moment of silence in memory of a former school committee member, Rose Baldwin, who passed away on March 6th. She served this town on the school committee from April 1976 through April 1982. A moment of silence, please. We'll move to public participation. Is there anybody here who would like to address the committee? Mr. Fitzgerald? He looks like he's bearing gifts.
You brought gifts? I'm actually going to be brief today. Brian Fitzgerald, grade five humanities teacher, president of Wareham Education Association. And I'm here to rectify something that happened last time I spoke with you. I got a lot of static from the committee that I wasn't giving you stuff last time. So, I am giving some stuff to you tonight, and that includes you Barry, and that includes you Michelle, and I'm going to leave something behind for Cindy when she gets here. And you're each going to be enjoying an orange lavender cookie with white chocolate fresh from the Fitzgerald kitchen last night.
Whoa.
And in the bag with those, coincidentally, it's going to be a little flyer that looks like this, and I want to tell everyone on the committee and all the wonderful folks watching at home, that tomorrow, March 21st, is a fundraiser for the Wareham Education Association Scholarship Fund at Chili's. If you bring in the flyer, which has been thoughtfully already placed in your goody bag, 10 percent of your total bill will go to the WA Scholarship Fund. I tried to do the math the other day. I'm thinking since I started teaching, the WA Scholarship Fund has given about, at least $20,000 worth of awards. And this is money coming out of the educators of Wareham to students graduating from the Wareham Public School System, to the progeny of Wareham educators. And, you know, we're trying to get these kids to college, and you know how expensive college is. I'm sure Kenny's finding out a lot about that these days. And we want to help in what little way that we can. So, if everybody up on stage, and everybody in the audience, and everybody watching would love to come to Chili's tomorrow, anytime and all during the day, we'll be handing these flyers out, no cost to you. 10 percent of your bill goes to the scholarship fund, and we can do some more to help out some kids who want to get to college in these tough times. So, that's all I'm going to say, and I thank you for the time.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else who would like to address the committee? Seeing none, I'll move on to good news. Anybody have any good news they'd like to share? Dr. Rabinovich?
Thank you very much. I have a communication that I think comes under good news from the NIA Scholarship Group. It says, "Here is the final summary of the scholarships awarded to the five Wareham recipients who graduated from Wareham High School in 2008. The students completed undergraduate requirements in a variety of challenging majors and collected ..."
Hold one second.
Dr. Barry, can you please move the microphone?
That's the first time somebody said I was too quiet.
That's true.
Do you need me to begin?
Yes, please.
Here is the final summary of the scholarships awarded to the five Wareham recipients who graduated from Wareham High School in 2008. The students completed undergraduate requirements in a variety of challenging majors and collected the full $56,000 awarded to this class on a timely basis. It was a pleasure to support them, and it appears they will move on to rewarding careers. On behalf of the trustees, I'd like to thank you all for your continued commitment to provide us with the highest caliber candidates for this scholarship. And, so, from the five students that received these scholarships, the average GPA over the four years was a 3.48. And we have students that graduated with a major in management nutrition, biology pre-med, psychology, economics, and psychology pre-med. So, I think, you know, we often wonder what happens to some of our graduates. This is a statement about graduates that have got this scholarship and what they've done, and they've been tracked for their years in college. So, that is my first good piece of good news.
Can be characterized as good news.
I have a second one. This is from Mrs. Rotella to me about the Destination Imagination yearly report. Four teams took part in the program this year. There were two from the Minnet Forest School and two from Wareham Middle School. We had one fifth grade team and one team made up of fourth graders from Minnet Forest. The fifth grade team had six members and was coached by a parent. Five out of six members have been part of the program for the past three years, and all members plan to continue next year. This team placed third out of eight teams and earned the Renaissance Award for Outstanding Design Engineering or Performance for one of their tasks. The fourth grade team also placed third and received the highest points for one of their team choice requirements. These students will be moving to the middle school next year, but can remain in the elementary level of this competition if they wish. One of the middle school teams was made up of six males, and this was the first year for the members as well as their coach, and the team placed fourth overall. The second team from the middle school was made up of seventh graders, most who have been part of this program since third grade. Their coach was one of our teachers and the DI Coordinator for the school. And I believe they made it into the finals. So, that is great news. They are competing with schools all across Massachusetts, and this is one of those things that really does challenge our students and is something that is available for some of our gifted students. And I hope that we have teams at all of the schools next year. It is advertised, we pay a stipend, there is money within the curriculum budget for this, and so hopefully the other elementary school will also have a team next year. We're always looking for parent volunteers as well.
All set?
All set, thank you.
Any other good news? Mike?
I'm glad Dr. Rabinovich brought that up because he'd said it a lot better than I could have. I guess Mrs. Rotella prepared that, that was great, because I was there. My son was in one of the teams, he was in the fifth grade team that got the third place.
Excellent.
Yeah, it was, it's the second time he's been, it's great. I mean, they really do, all of the teams do such a great job, and it's taken so seriously. I mean, there's, the judges take it seriously, the coaches take it seriously, the kids, everybody takes it so seriously, and they have fun, too, you know, and it's a great time. And it was the, it's an all-day thing, you've got to be there all day. But, you know, we did do pretty well. Rochester and Barnstable, for some reason, they do really well. I think they're bigger schools, they have more to draw around, but it was, it's always a great, great experience to go there. I have more good news. I went to that middle school tour that they do for the incoming fifth graders, and fourth graders now, that current fourth graders, and that went really well. I've toured a bunch of the buildings, a bunch of the school buildings, but I haven't actually toured this one yet. But the more I see of it, the more I'm convinced that we made the right decision to move the fifth grade there. It's, I wish we did it sooner, honestly. And it went really well. The student council ran it, they toured all the kids around and stuff, and they had, they did a great job. Also want to bring up the honor society at the DECA School put on a fundraiser at the flagship cinemas over the weekend. And I don't want to steal anyone's thunder, but they did a great job, and I've asked them to come before the committee, but it's MCAS week, and Mrs. Panerisi thought it would be best for a different, a different day. But they did a great job, and the community really turned out, and it was great. That's it.
Thank you. Anybody else? I suspect I know what you're going to talk about.
I bet you don't.
Well, then I'll talk, then I'll talk about it. Go ahead.
Go ahead, you talk.
No, 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 go ahead, you're on.
I'll defer.
No, go for it.
Well, first of all, the obvious thing is I want to congratulate our students at Wareham High School for their conduct, their excitement and their enthusiasm throughout the entire basketball season. I think we've got a lot to be proud of, and our basketball team, again, you know, is a source of pride for the entire community. And unfortunately, they lost a very, very close game at UMass Boston last Saturday. Incidentally, I only saw half the game because the traffic was so bad. I left two hours early and still didn't make it on time. But I think that they just played their hearts out. Their shooting hands were a little cold in the second half, but it was exciting, it was nip and tuck right at the end. But the most important thing is they really exemplified good sportsmanship and what it is to be a winner, and I think that they continue to do that at Wareham High School. Second thing is, unfortunately, I was away, but I understand the drama club again outdid themselves with their performance, and I want to congratulate the drama club and all the kids that were involved. And finally, I'd like to just thank the, again, thank the DECA group for their efforts in maintaining high standards and coming out with, I don't know, I think they had about 50 kids competed at the state level, and they probably had, I don't know, 10 or 11 finalists, and they got several kids going on national competition again. So, I think all of these things point to the fact that, you know, despite the fiscal situation and despite all of the things that we're encountering, in terms of negatives, we still have a lot of positives to talk about, and I think we've got to continue to accentuate the positive. And I want to compliment Mr. Flaherty because he's made an attempt, since he's been on the board, to do that almost every week, and I think that that is a really good attitude. And I think that it's one of the things that we as a committee need to do and need to do on a regular basis, not just at the committee meetings, but also out in the community, because, you know, when we're, when we're talking about the trials and tribulations of the system and the things that we need, you know, we kind of have a tendency to overestimate that and underestimate, you know, what exactly is going on and what exactly our accomplishments are with the limited resources that we have. So, kudos to all these folks and to the middle school group. I think that, you know, despite it all, we've got a bunch of dedicated people and a bunch of kids that are excited about their learning, and I think that that's a positive that we have to, we have to emphasize every single week. So, thank you, Mr. Jeff, for your patience.
Thank you. Anything else?
Just one thing. I just want to recognize and welcome Ms. Miranda back to our meetings. I saw her walk in, and it's, I think, your first meeting back, so I just want to say welcome, and we're glad to have you back.
I just want to second Cliff's comments about DECA. I have the good fortune of being a coach, and it's amazing to watch the confidence grow as a result of participation in DECA. It is something that seems to take shy freshmen and make them into confident juniors and seniors. And it's, it benefits them not only in their future careers, but it benefits them in, I suspect, every aspect of their life, including their participation in sports. Okay, anything else? Moving on to the minutes of March 6th.
Will we accept the minutes as presented?
The exceedingly lengthy and well, and well-put-together minutes. Thank you, Michelle.
Extremely well-put together.
We go long, and Michelle has to write long. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Noticeably absent from the minutes was Mrs. Vugan's okie dokie.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you for bringing that up. That's an error of omission, I think they call that.
Okie dokie.
Yeah, I'll let it go.
You'll let it go? A moment of kindness on the part of Mr. Flaherty. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? 5-0-0. Ms. Miranda, you're already ready. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda, for your kind words, and it feels really good to have some semblance of a normal life back again.
Welcome back.
It's very good to be back. Okay. Going to go through the function summary report and highlight accounts that I have comments, clarifications, want to give you some additional information on. Right now, we're looking at, it can come down to 2120 department heads. It looks like there's a huge variance there. When I looked into it, it's because when the former athletic director's salary had been planned there, and then with the new athletic director taking over, he, his salary had been planned already in the teacher line item as well as, you know, with the dean portion of his salary, and we only then hired a .5 teaching position to take over some of the teaching classes. So, there was a savings there in a portion of the athletic director's salary that we did not have to pay out, only the stipend. It looks like it's a really huge variance, but it really isn't. We actually do need to have $559,000 in that line to meet our obligations for FY13. I don't have any concerns with any other accounts on the first page. Do any of you want to ask?
Seeing none. Please move forward.
Teachers' classroom, feeling very good, you know, ahead of the game, 46.31 as opposed to 45 percent at the same period in time last year. We know that's really the line item, that it really is the bulk of our budget, so it's our barometer. In 2310, that is one ELE teacher salary. And what I have come to find is that we will have to do some transfer corrections on it. I don't believe this person has been paid out of the correct account for the whole, for a portion of the year correctly, so that's something that we're looking at to be able to rectify that. So, that's really not going to be an issue because what has been planned will actually cover that. It's like a .5 position. The, down to substitutes.
Which account was that, again?
This is 2310.
2310. Thank you.
Teachers', specialists.
Got it.
It's one position, it's that ELE.
Okay.
I do want to give you a breakdown of the substitute accounts. If you notice right now, looking at 34.77 remaining and 54 comparison to last year. I'm actually going to go right off the VEDAR sheets because what's new to this year in the account structure for substitutes, because remember last year, we really wanted to try to get a better handle on, you know, when we have these long-term subs, because normally they were just paid out of the regular building account to try to get a handle on what our real obligations are around that. And previous year, we tweaked out the professional development so that we could really kind of get down to that layer of, gee, what is really the sick personal, you know, those types of expenses. We are in deficit, 7,262 in just professional development subs at this point, right now. The full-day programs, when we went to full day, we then had to create full-day accounts that were specific to them, but at the time when we planned, there were no monies planned in that account because we made the decision late in the year to then to go to full day. So, these, no amounts were ever encumbered, no amounts of money were ever planned for these accounts, but we did have to set them up to pay and report directly, you know, correctly to the Department of Ed. So, right now, in the DECA's full-day sub-teacher, they're in deficit and in sub-pairs by 3,500. Minnet has the same situation because they've got their full day, they're in deficit, 4,229. But what I did find is that we did plan monies for regular para-sub, which was supposed to cover the kindergarten sub. It's a matter of just transferring those monies into these accounts. We had 6,500 planned in the Minnet account that could right now cover that, the deficit, and in the DECA's, the line item had been planned for 9,000 to cover the account. So, those, at least we've identified some monies that actually were in there for regular ed, they just need to go into full-day regular ed pairs, because there really are no other regular ed pairs outside of at DECA's, CNA is a regular ed, because we don't call subs for Title I. So, there's, that's where that is coming from. Huge, the district accounts, $88,107 in deficit, and this would include regular ed long-term substitute teacher, and again, this is that after the 11th day, they were paying people at bachelor's plus, you know, one. That account is 9,000.
Anna, just, what account are we on? I got lost.
All right, Dr. Sylvia, if I might, Anna, the issue-
I'm doing the line item.
Yes, the problem is this one account, substitutes, 2325, is broken up into all these others. Anna's going through the sub, which you can't see.
Because even though it's not showing-
To try to explain why the total isn't-
I got lost.
I understand. I understand.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But it's easy for me to get lost.
Yeah. But what it shows me is how much we really do spend on, so we have regular ed at 9,000. District long-term special ed sub-line is in deficit, 4,400. The sped long-term substitute para-line is 1,200. District other long-term substitutes is 73,000, and these are people that are on assignments covering for whether it's maternity leaves, medical leaves, whatever. So, I mean, I don't like the amount and how much, but I, I think it's good that we're getting a better handle on exactly where, you know, the breakdown of all these sub-c costs come. We've got a couple minor, like middle sped sub is 350 in the whole, high sped substitute teacher, 1,600, and east para-professionals at 2,000. That compromises where we are right now with our deficits in our sub.
Any questions on the substitute line, Anna?
So, what are you expecting for the end of the year?
Thank you.
It's so hard to project because someone, you know, two weeks from now could end up saying, "Okay, I'm on family 12-week medical leave," and which means we're going to have to pick up another long-term sub. It's really, it's very unpredictable. If nothing more happens, I believe there are four people getting paid, so we know right now, I have four individuals on assignment currently. I mean, I could research it to look at, you know, when these people expected to come back and do those kind of projections for you if you'd like.
No, I think it's just that you're, that there's pretty much a guarantee that this, that we're going to end the year with this account in deficit.
These line item accounts, absolutely. Now, whether we end up having surpluses in the, like, building accounts that then make up for it, anyone's guess.
So-
Yeah, that could be anyone's guess.
So, 2325 is building substitutes, is that correct?
2325 is all subs.
Or is it all subs?
And then you can, then you can break it down even further, you know, with other codes.
That is the all-encompassing substitute account, correct? That includes special ed and whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, and then it's broken down further, but it does not include professional development subs, is that correct?
No. I gave you the professional development subs, that's a different function code.
Well, it's a different line, it's 2355.
Yeah, that one's different. 2355 is professional development.
So, what I just said was that 20, that, I'm sorry, that 2325 does not include professional development subs, is that correct?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have anything?
Just, I was going to wait until the end, but just sort of brought it up. You sound like we're going into deficit and hopefully balancing with surpluses. Do you, given the new budget policy and the speed bumps we put in there, do you see-
I see us coming to the board with a recommendation about transfers, once we feel we can predict how much needs to be transferred. At the same time, one of the other exercises Anna's been doing is calculating which accounts have excess and trying to make sure that it's excess by projecting forward. So, yes, we will come to you shortly with that thing, whether it's the 10th or the one after that, I'm not quite sure.
Okay, thank you.
Cliff?
Never mind, never mind.
My concern about this, Anna, and I'm not sure who the best person to answer this question is, but meaning either yourself or the superintendent, but, and I don't mean to imply anything negative towards the individual building principals, but the way this is set up as a district-wide account, it is, doesn't have the same level of accountability as if it was a building account with some fraction of that number for each principal to manage. What was the, what was the reason why we decided to make it a district-wide account as compared to a building account?
That's an incorrect assumption. There are building-level accounts that building principals are responsible for. They roll up in this report to this four-digit number, the function code that we have to report by. So, in the 33 page, we have every single account, like what we'll see when we go through the budgeted thing, you'll actually see every single building has its own substitute account for regular teachers, for special ed teachers, for para-professionals, for professional development, and so forth.
And now for full day, it has to be its own separate, you know.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that correction.
Yes. We did not consolidate. Each building still has its series of accounts. Yes.
Okay, but this, this represents about $80,000 under, over budget. That's a big number. That's a really big number. And if you could have a, sort of an executive summary for the April 3rd meeting, because speaking only for myself, this is going to have to get some more attention, because I don't think we can afford to spend, and with the 80,000, it's going to be close to a half a million dollars or more on substitutes, given the number, the number of full-time regular teachers that represents.
And what will help in that analysis is that we know, like, I can track and work with Michelle, to look at how many long-term assign, just like, get how much it cost us last year, and just, you know, what portion of what we spent last year were on these long-term assignments, and then compare it to where we are at least right now and start looking at it. But I do believe there's value in us knowing, because in a way, I'm not so convinced we've really planned for it. We planned, we used to plan for it maybe to a certain degree, but we might have been planning maybe 10,000 per building, or 12,000, or 15 for a long-term sub, but not really knowing then that by the end of the year, the records, it wasn't easy to tell what portion of that really was spent on a long-term sub versus just the daily subs. But at least now, you know, we will have a better idea, Jeff.
To draw an analogy, the town pulls its hair out over police overtime. I mean, they do. The town administrator, the finance committee, and perhaps others, because it feels like a blank check, and there's nothing they can do about it, and it just keeps happening year after year after year. I feel that way about the substitute line, Anna. It just stays huge all the time. That's not to say that we don't want people going out on maternity leaves of absence, that's not the issue. Obviously, some, some of this is, we have no choice, but it's just such a big number. Cliff, did you want to?
Well, the only thing I was going to say is, in terms of the substitute, the thing that bothers me more than anything, the only way to really plan for substitute account is to look at the trends over, over a long period of time. You just look at the trends, and you try to come up with some kind of a trend analysis that, that provides us the best information we can for the substitutes. But the thing that always bothers me about the substitutes is the fact that we're, give or take, you know, you've got about a little under a half a million dollars in substitutes on that 2325 thing. But the thing that bothers me is the best use of substitute money is in professional development, and we budgeted $9,000. Think about that for a minute. $9,000 out of a $500,000 budget for substitutes. And that's the best use of the money, in terms of providing our teachers opportunities to refine their crafts, whether it be a new curriculum- to refine their crafts, whether it be a new curriculum initiative or whatever the case may be. So that's the thing that always bothers me about, about substitutes, is that they're, it's always a disproportionate amount for professional development, in my opinion.
Thank you. Anything else? Move on, please, Miranda, Ms. Miranda.
On, so page two of the sub reform, any other questions on any of the other accounts there? People transportation doing much better, looking at thirty-three point fifty-one percent remaining, as opposed to sixty point fifty-five. So it's definitely a healthier budget. When we get to the revolving accounts, I'll give you an update on, on that as well. Our heating and utility. Now, one would think we've had a much colder winter. We've basically had like spells that we didn't have last year, yet. When I ran this analysis, we're actually, we have spent less this winter in heating and electricity. Thus far, half a million, five hundred and twelve thousand, compared to six hundred twenty-eight thousand is what we had spent up until this period last year. I had a meeting with the head custodians, and it's sort of all over the place. So I've asked them last week to, those buildings where we did, we didn't see decreases, that did go up, to identify. Like, for example, I know Minnit, the heating costs have gone up, and I believe it's because of the, we're now heating that huge gym space that has all, you know, where the instructional leaders are, so there, and also having to run some electric heaters as well, because of the space and, and just the heating system in, in there, so, you know, that would be a reason. Middle went up significantly, so Mrs. Silva's gonna be looking into that for me as well. But overall, I had expected that we would have, really have spent much more, but we haven't, so that's good news. Good news on that front.
Ms. Miranda?
Mm-hmm.
You skipped over twenty-seven, twenty, and there's just a huge, can you just explain, we just haven't paid out yet, or the discrepancy in testing and assessment?
Oh, that's, well, that's, actually ordering, let's see, that's, I think I'd have to refer to Bob on that. I think.
I mean, it's in the positive, which is great, it's not the other way, but I'm just wondering, did we not do something this year?
No. It, this is basic, it's the testing assessment line. I know they, they do, there are tests that are gonna come much later in the year. We're gonna up the volume of testing after May, May and June, all the requests go up. But I, I, I would, because unless they had a surplus and maybe not needing to-
Something I think that we can investigate is whether or not grant funds paid for something we thought LEA was gonna pay for.
Could be that, too.
And that we budgeted it, but we found grant money to pay for instead.
Okay, thanks.
But I'll, I'll, I'll delve further into that one, Miranda, okay?
Hopefully it's found money.
Hope it's gonna be a surplus, right? Okay. Now, maintenance, okay. We do have issues with maintenance. While we're saving on our energy, it's getting eaten up by maintenance. And I really, I wanna give you a breakdown. It's not looking very good. There we go, all right. Thus far, the Deccus does not have a deficit yet. Minnit is at forty-nine hundred in deficit in the two, two main maintenance accounts, building maintenance, equipment repair. So for Minnit, they're four, four thousand nine hundred. Co-op is, has a balance of seventy, not gonna get them to the end of the year, so I know that one's also gonna be in deficit. But they do still have twelve hundred in their equipment account. Hammond, it's very, it's not much. High school is now in deficit for maintenance and high equipment, two thousand three hundred. Academy, six thousand seven hundred in deficit for maintenance, and East, two hundred thirty-eight. Our buildings are getting older, you know, there's a lot of stress.
But those budget line items are not significantly increased.
I'm sorry?
Those budget line items are not significantly increased.
Well, yeah, we actually may have to increase them. So building, so I do, you know, that, you can anticipate, 'cause there are gonna be more repairs to be made yet, you know, from, from now to the end of the year, so those are gonna go into deficit. Going on to like fifty-three hundred, we saw a decrease because of a December update on our RICO copiers, actually brought our costs down, that we just did. And then program with schools and payments to member collaboratives, looking as, basically we really encumbered, we've encumbered those funds to be able to pay those tuitions out. Anyone have any other specific off the LEA to ask?
So, just to be clear, the, there's a, we've made payments to member collaboratives beyond what was necessary, in anticipation of having-
Encumbered.
In anticipation of, of having those funds available?
No, we, we encumber the funds for both of those, ninety-three and ninety-four hundred, based on what the bills will be, and then we spend from those encumbrances. So you see the number of encumbrances that are there. However, we, we had substantially less. Basically, we had-
Bob, I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to ask you to come down. It's not fair to the, to the people at home.
Both of them.
My concern is, if, if what I said was incorrect, we've, we're in the hole big time for the ninety-four hundred account.
Right. So, the way that we account for the ninety-three hundred and ninety-four hundred accounts is that we encumber what we know to be the costs at the beginning of the year, and that we, we pay off of those encumbrances. The, the, between those two accounts, we only have forty-three thousand dollars left. At this time of year, that would look very scary, because you'd think we still have another four months to pay. But in fact, what we have is forty-three hundred, forty-three thousand that is not committed to, to any of the, of the payments. That's a very small figure for this time of year. One more placement would be difficult for us to handle. But we have to, we have to go back to the last budget season, and remember that we had almost two-point-one million dollars in bills, and one-point-five million dollars budgeted in the LEA.
I'm not suggesting this is an easy account to manage.
Yeah.
I'm just suggesting that you budgeted two-twenty-six, and you've spent three-seventy-five, so-
We, I, I budgeted much more than that. That, that account was reduced because of the, reducing the budget.
To make cuts.
We were underfunded in that budget.
I hear you, loud and clear.
So there's no, there's no, you know, I guess my summary is that there's no surprise to me in the fact that that's in deficit, because we took money from that account upfront.
Got it. And you're hoping Anna can do her magic by the end of the year.
Well, what I-
This has to be his magic.
What I, what I can say is, at this point in time, with the students that we have to educate, where we have to educate them, we have sufficient money to be able to make it to the end of the year. Where we would be in trouble is if we have additional expenses beyond that. Then we would have to do something else like tap into the current year's circuit breaker that we're already planning for, for next year. That's where our revenue stream would come from. This is the tightest in my five years. This is the tightest that we've been at this point in the year.
Got it. Thank you. Any other questions, Miranda, on the financial review, before we get to the revolver?
Question?
Why don't you move on to the revolver, Anna?
All right, revolving accounts, school property is in deficit a hundred forty-four dollars, because we, this is the account that was used to, to do that entire removal of the underground oil storage tank at the high school. And that was the twenty thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars is what cost us there. Transportation is up to a hundred and twelve nine nine seven, of the sixty thousand that was encumbered. Twenty-five thousand has been spent, so thirty-five thousand remains in that one hundred twelve thousand from town meeting. The rest, we're just looking at, I don't really see anything really significant changes in terms of the gift accounts. Athletic receipts are down a little bit, but I, I believe that there's, we received two deposits within the last couple of days that are not included in this, because this was run on the fourteenth. So there will be an update for that. The full-day kindergarten preschool revolving account is, currently this year, there, there is a portion of monies that were committed to pay the K para salaries. And then after this year, this account really will have nothing to do with full-day expenses or expenditures that would really solely just be for preschool.
Mr. Font has a question.
Come next year.
Just a question on the athletic receipts. Another season has ended, and since we have a interim athletic director, we have yet to have an athletic report. I don't know if you could address that, or Mr. Palladino?
When did we put it on?
We actually-
April tenth, it's scheduled for the meeting.
Yes, we, actually Scott and I had had a meeting, and it's been scheduled for the April tenth to do the report.
And there'll be another one after that.
It'll be the fall and the winter.
Okay.
Yep, they'll do fall and winter for you. Okay.
Cliff?
I guess, I guess the thing that I don't quite understand, in the absence of having a detailed report, I'm, I'm just guessing, I guess. But if you, if you notice the amounts on the athletic receipts-
Can you have the microphone, please?
Pardon?
Can you have the microphone?
If, if you take a look at the athletic receipts line, and, and I just found this amusing when I, when I went through my packet, is, yeah, because in June, we had ten thousand in receipts. I, I don't know where they come from in the summer, but, okay, whatever. And then in August, we had nine thousand, correct?
Excuse me, just a point, point of information, this is a balance, not receipts, is that correct?
This is receipts? Or is this balance?
Balance.
I think it's the balance.
It's balance. All right, okay, all right. So balance is nine thousand, okay, in August, and then eleven thousand, and then all of a sudden, December, it must, it must be something to do with Thanksgiving, it goes up to thirty-one thousand. But then, in March, when we've got all those basketball games, it goes down to twenty thousand. It ju, it just doesn't seem to run true to form going across. And again-
I mean, December, I know all the football, you know, like, all the football receipts are in there.
Right, but there are also football expenses, those coaches have to get paid.
And, and I'm wondering if they, they've started to do the registr, you know, if maybe some winter, winter athletic fees are being paid at the same time for the winter. So that would pad that month.
When we get the reports, I'll be looking at it more closely, and I'll, I'll do a comparison between what's here and what's on the reports. Thanks.
Okay.
Go ahead, Anna.
Okay, that's it. Other than that, I mean, unless you have any specific, you know, our school choice is at ninety-four. We've received two payments thus far this year, still due for another one, for school choice.
Any questions, Miranda? Just back to transportation. It's favorable on its operating budget. So is it fair to say that from this point on, for the fiscal year, another three months, everything that is generated is just gonna build this account? There's, it's, it's in a building mode, and we're actually producing something that might be able to buy a bus or two next, next fiscal year?
Yep, as long as we don't exceed expenses in the LEA, and then have to use the revolver to cover it.
No, I understand, but we're favorable there.
But right now, we're favorable.
Right now, we're favorable.
Right now, we're good.
Right, so things look reasonably good.
I think it's definitely, definitely healthier, more favorable this year.
Okay, good, thank you. Okay, you all set, Anna?
No.
Thank you very much, and welcome back.
Thank you again.
Thank you, Anna.
Accelerated roof repair, Mr. Palladino.
We're here today to ask for your support in the form of a vote, to allow us to move forward with the Mass State Building Authority accelerated repair program. As many of you are aware, I think you heard from some teachers over the last few months at school committee meetings, our roof has quite a few holes in the roof. The current roof is approximately twenty-two years of age, it covers approximately eighty-five thousand square feet. It's definitely outlived its life expectancy. The roof has multiple levels, angles, and cutouts. We have placed over five hundred patches on the roof in various sections throughout the last few years. In FY-12, we stopped patching the roof. We felt we were putting good money into something that was very bad. We've lived with it. We've lived with the leaks, multiple leaks in classrooms, multiple leaks in the hallways. This year alone, we had two teachers, one of which is here tonight, that fell in the hallway as a result of the water from one of the past rainstorms that we had. It adversely affects the learning environment, and is creating mold in our ceiling tiles, and eventually on the floor. As you're all aware, this could pose dangerous air quality situations at the high school. We're spending thousands of dollars every year to cover this, these moldy ceiling tiles up, replace them with brand-new ceiling tiles that eventually get molded and stained themselves. In the packet that I forwarded to you last week is the MSBA initial compliance certification that will eventually need to be signed off by Dr. Ravinevich, Chairman Swett, and Town Manager Derek Sullivan. The application and the sign-off need to be received to the MSBA office by April tenth. Additionally, on the last page of your packet, you'll see a required form, which is a vote to submit a statement of interest. That is what Anna and I have been working on and will be working on in the next few weeks. We will need to have the school committee to vote for us to move forward on this, and then eventually we'll need to ask to go in front of the selectmen for a vote of support. And we will be required to attach the meeting notes from both meetings to our packet. In the end, this will only be supported by the MSBA if we are chosen, and then, as you're all aware of, if the town supports funding at the town meeting. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Just, just to be clear, what is the ideal optimistic timeline for this process?
Well, we've got a little bit of experience now in regards to the gym, and I had a chance to, to talk with some of the workers, and, you know, the timeline that we had, although we had to deal with some adverse weather, in regards to people being hungry for work, definitely the fall is a great timeline as far as-
No, 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 I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about the repair of the roof, I'm talking about the process by which-
Oh, I'm sorry.
-we could actually get funding.
It, nothing is available, obviously, until July first, that would be the earliest. So if, if this was able to go in front of a spring town meeting, the, the first available funds will be released July first. But it's all based on the MSBA in regards to their timeline, but the earliest would be July first.
I'm, I'm sorry, I thought Dr. Ravinevich and I had a conversation that, that the spring town meeting was not gonna be possible, even though I think there is gonna be a special. Did I misinterpret an earlier comment?
No, my, my feeling was, if this goes to MSBA, and then once it gets MSA, MSBA approval, then to move forward to the October town meeting to get the funding, which will fit fine with bidding the job and getting it done in the fall.
So the timeline would be our vote to approve?
Correct.
Board of Selectmen's vote to approve?
Correct.
And then a submission, and all the forms filled out, a submission to the MSBA, and then assuming they say fine, then it goes to our town meeting?
Correct.
And if our town meeting approves it, now we can actually put out bids and hopefully get it done sometime this fall?
Correct, at the earliest.
Okay, I just wanted to understand the time.
And I would caution that that would be at the earliest, because our prior experience was, they did take, I mean, they may not make a- was they did take, I mean, they may not make a decision till after fall.
I'm with you. That was the optimistic.
Yeah.
I completely understand. There's a lot of optimism associated with what I just said. So, I'm not, I'm not being any, I'm not being presumptuous, I'm just thinking of ideal circumstances. So, as long as we have the timeline, um, clear, I'll open it up to questions. Any questions?
I just, so, we're not going to know the total cost of it until we bid it out, correct?
Correct. And as we saw, there was great fluctuation just with the gym roof, which is roughly one tenth the size of the rest of the school, uh, as far as the roof goes. So, it could fluctuate. We're hoping that, you know, if we, if the fall, if it's supported at the fall town meeting, um, people are really hungry to work in, in the late fall.
But to that point, I think Dr. Ravinevich has said, you know, it's somewhere around a million dollars to do the remaining piece, plus or minus. How, what percentage does the MSBA process, uh, take of that?
Right, we're estimating somewhere in the high fifties, low sixties is our estimation as far as reimbursement. But I do also want to, um, remind you that we went in front of town meeting, uh, for I believe a hundred and ten thousand dollars, uh, for the gym roof and that came back substantially less than that. So we're hoping, you know-
I understand.
-we'll get lucky with the timing.
But town meeting would have to be approving presumably the borrowing-
Four hundred thousand.
-of approximately four hundred thousand dollars.
Correct.
Plus or minus?
Plus or minus.
Thank you. Anything else from Mr. Palladino on this subject? Okay, you need a vote, correct?
Yes, please.
Okay. I'll take a motion to approve the, I guess we're approving the, uh, giving myself and Dr. Ravinevich the authority to assign the initial compliance certification in support of a new roof under the Massachusetts School Building Authority program for the high school. I'll take a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Repose, abstain, five zero zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
I think you can stay right there, right?
You're going to stay, Anna?
I'm out.
Thanks. I'll, I'll ask Debbie Freitas, the system principal, to come up, take Anna's spot.
And not only thank you to Debbie, but to all the department heads that are here, we appreciate your attendance.
And, and I'll recognize them in just a second for you as well. Um, so, thank you for allowing us, uh, to present the course of studies tonight. Tonight, we're presenting to you a draft and although I didn't have the fancy draft sticker, this is a draft, uh, until we receive your approval. And there's still a few changes that I'll identify that we've made, uh, since we, um, sent this in to you folks. And, uh, we appreciate your input to make this a better working document for our students. Uh, tonight, uh, we have some department heads that are here that if Debbie and I can't answer the questions or if we miss anything, they'll be there to keep us in line and, and keep you in tune, um, to their goals for the department in regards to the course of studies. And, uh, so we have Dan Knoll, uh, special ed, uh, department head, Mike Murray, English department head, Henry St. Julian, history department head, Brian Nobrega, business and technology department head, and Chris Maz, our math department head. I don't think I missed anyone. Uh, Tom Tricker, unfortunately, is at the high school right now, unfortunately for the kids. Uh, they have the young composers night where the students are presenting original work, uh, from the music department. So it's a pretty exciting night for Wareham High School all around. Our goal, uh, is to begin tonight and then eventually, uh, once everything is approved, move, move forward with our guidance presentations in the classroom. Uh, we're going through our history departments. We'd like to thank Mr. St. Julian for allowing us to go through the history department, uh, to conduct our presentations on the course of studies. We hope to do this the week of April first, obviously with MCAS occurring this weekend and the beginning of next week. We're trying to stay away from that, but it is quite an intensive process when you're trying to schedule a school with eight periods and, uh, six hundred and thirty-some odd students that we're anticipating for next year. So, uh, without further ado, uh, I know that you appreciate the cheat sheet of the changes that we give you, uh, rather than going through the whole, uh, course of studies. I, I do want to highlight, uh, two changes that we have since made. Uh, one is that we are hoping to require, uh, the SAT prep program for our juniors. Students can appeal and opt out of it to the principal, but we're hoping to require that, uh, as a way of, uh, increasing our, our SAT scores and, uh, hopefully during some future presentations, we'll, we'll show those gains and we'll remember this meeting. So that's one change and that will be a requirement, um, as long as we have the staff to support that. The other change that you, uh, may have recognized is the Algebra I honors, although it's on your, um, your changes to the program of studies, it was, uh, omitted from the original program of studies, so that is now on the program of studies too. So those are two changes. Um, was there, was there a question?
We're doing now or then?
Uh, what's your preference in terms of questions?
I, I can stop, uh, between each department, that would probably be appropriate. But if there's a question in regards to those-
Just, just a question on the, on the omission.
Go ahead.
Um, is that, is that a point five course?
Correct.
I mean, a point two-five course?
So what it's going to be is a point two-five ELA and a point two-five math.
All right, so it's five credits.
So it'll equate to a point five, right? So it'll be a half year.
Okay.
Correct.
And you currently offer it as an elective?
As an elective. It's, I think the wording now in the course of studies, it's recommended.
Okay.
And I'd like to move to-
And do a lot of kids take it?
Not as many as we should have taken it.
Okay.
Okay.
And it's, um, it's a great program and actually ironically, Mike Murray is the instructor for this year. And, uh, the kids, we're going to, we're going to actually be evaluating, uh, the, the increase in scores for the kids that were in the program before and after.
I was just going to say, is there any data to, to support that it's a valuable use of their time and in this case, Mike's time?
There's data in regards to the programs that we've either purchased or, or are purchasing, uh, in regards to their data, but it's more global data than, we're looking, we want to see the local data.
Okay, thank you. So to be clear, we'll take a break after each subject.
I'll pause after each one.
Okay.
And, um, I, I do want to remind you, it's not a, the graduation, excuse me, graduation requirement is increasing by five credits every year. So now that we'll be having the class two thousand sixteen, they will be at a hundred and thirty credits and classes beyond as well. And I know we talked about that, uh, approximately a year ago, we increased the graduation requirement, increased the rigor. We had a presentation with Jan, um, last week, uh, two weeks ago rather, at the last school committee meeting. And, uh, so that's added. You also see, uh, the graduation requirement, which we talked about with Mass Core, of five credits for the fine arts slash music has been added. So that's all aligned with the Mass Core. In regards to the career in technology, I always had a problem with going in front of the eighth graders and talking about one of our best programs, which is the DECA program. And we talk about it and we try and get them excited about it, but freshman year, they really can't do anything with it because we don't have a course that's offered to freshmen in the business slash DECA, uh, department. So, we looked at some other schools in the area and took a look at what they were doing and Ms. Freitas did a lot of investigative work on this and we're excited to be offering our virtual courses, virtual business retailing, which you see highlighted, and virtual business restaurant. These are two and a half credit courses, which equates to a half year. And, uh, the exciting piece is freshmen can take this. So this is kind of our, our piece to try and encourage kids to stay at Wareham High School, but also we hope that it's going to build the DECA program to a whole nother level. We've seen it firsthand when I've gone to the regional competitions, uh, and we see like an apponequid high school and how many kids they have involved and, and how well they do their junior and senior year. So we're excited to offer this. Uh, a couple of our teachers have done a lot of homework on this as well and I, and I know Debbie did. So if you have anything to add on that, Debbie?
I'd also just like to acknowledge, uh, Ms. Nobrega's part in this as well because he did speak with the apponequid people, uh, at their high school. They do actually run these classes and they're very well, um, attended and, uh, they are very successful with the, with students as far as interest, um, especially with the lower levels of, of grade levels as well. So, um, we do feel that is a, looking at some of the interests of our students, uh, in, in the business world and, and, um, in the restaurants, the business as well. And that is something that is marketable in this area. We felt that the student interest will help drive, uh, these courses being, um, recommended for next year.
Any questions on the business department?
No.
Rhonda?
So can you tell me what the experience will be for the students in these courses? Because it talks about it's, it's a virtual web-based business, so are you talking to the kids in this classroom that they'll all have computers, they're all?
Mm-hmm.
Correct. And, um, interactive because it's, it's web-based or online, it's a, it's really an introductory, um, to whether it be, uh, restaurant, uh, business or retailing, which then can become a larger class, a full year class when they get into the eleventh and twelfth grade.
So most of the learning is going to go on between the student and what's being learned on screen or is it more collaborative?
It, it's, it's really a hybrid is, is from the research that I've, that I've read about the program, it's, it's a hybrid, it's a, going to be a combination. There will be a, a teacher of record, a business teacher, a certified business teacher and there'll be, uh, pots online and pots that are traditional, um, instruction.
It's actually a simulation. The students will actually get, there's a lot of problem solving because there's a lot of decision-making that they have to participate in. And I don't know if Mr. Nobrega would like to talk a little bit about that?
Thank you for being here.
Welcome.
Hi, Brian. It, it's, uh, virtual business retailing and restaurant. They're a simulation that the students do on a computer. There is classroom components that go along with that. But most important is they're going to be competing against other kids with, throughout the United States in those different areas. So they can actually qualify to go onto national competition by coming out on top with these, uh, these two different types of retailing simulations that they're going to be doing. So it is a competitive, a competitive national DECA activity also.
And how will the students be graded on their performance?
They'll be graded through the curriculum materials that are going to be provided by, it's a, uh, a package that comes from, uh, Knowledge Matters, which does the virtual business challenge at the National DECA Conference. So these curriculum materials will be used for the students and it'll be graded accordingly by the instructor.
Great. I'm very excited about these courses.
Well, I, I, I hope the kids get excited about it because it is a great, a great competition. I think like five years ago, six years ago, six years ago, we had two students that came in second place in the United States with this, uh, virtual business challenge, so.
Okay, thanks.
Good.
Um, but basically, uh, in terms of the academics of it, they really do have to put together some kind of a business or a marketing plan, is that correct?
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
So it's, it's, it's actually developing a business plan, uh, within the area of, within those specific areas, uh, and then, and then putting it into, and putting it into action, um, through a simulation. Is that correct? Do I have it right?
Right, and it's, it's instantaneous, the results, because competitive activity is by a gross sales.
Okay.
And that's how business is.
Thank you.
To gross sales. Gross profit, I should say.
Thank you. I'm excited about it too.
When you, when a, when a course like this is given, do you have any feel for how a college and university reacts to a, an online virtual course as compared to a, a regular course given with a teacher up in front of the classroom? Do you have any sense of how the transcript is looked at?
Well, um, I, before I answer that question, I want to say it, it involves both.
I understand.
There will be a teacher that is teaching the basics, um, about business, retailing and about the restaurant business. So there, it, there is an instructional component in the classroom, it's not entirely, um, I-
It's a hybrid?
Y- yes.
Right, I understand that. But I, so I was asking the more generic question. I realize this is a hybrid, but if, if you were simply had a situation where it was a virtual course and it was coordinated, overseen by a, a teacher, but in fact, their role was quite limited compared to what they would normally play, do you have any sense of how colleges react to that kind of resume? That kind of transcript?
I know that there are tens of thousands of students that take VHS courses every year that are very highly regarded. I don't believe that it is a negative in regards to, um-
It's essentially considered equal.
College acceptance at all. I believe so, yes.
And the second question I have for the, the courses that you've removed, some of them sound like they date back to when I was in high school. I assume they're removed because of lack of students signing up for them. Is that a fair statement?
Correct.
Okay. So, what is the, and I hate, well, maybe I don't hate to do it. When you, when you think of the productivity issue, how many students do you want in front of a teacher to justify the effort, you know, that is required? What is that number?
I think, I think that's a loaded question.
It is a loaded question. It's an incredibly loaded question and I admit that upfront.
I, I'll give you the number for this. Twenty-four is where we like to be with this.
This meaning?
This course, that's where I'd like to be is twenty-four students.
Meaning the virtual course we were just talking about.
Correct. But I think, you know, because of safety, different classes, that you have safety concerns, those numbers can fluctuate. Mr. Knoll would talk to you about special ed numbers, they'll be different than the AP numbers, which are different than the CP, which would be different than the honors. I think it depends on the level, depends on the course, depends on the safety concerns that you would have. For this course in particular, I'd like to have twenty-four. Uh, hopefully, we'll be close to that number. Um, you know, and that's the important thing to remember is these courses are courses we would like to run. These are not, every course in here, we will not be able to run. We don't have the staff and we're not sure what the staffing level is going to be for next year.
Exactly.
But we try and make this a student-driven process. They have certain courses that are required. Obviously, we went over those la- last school committee meeting. And then, what we like to do is have a high-interest courses. I can't tell you the percentage of kids that go on to business and why do they go on to business? Because of our business and DECA program. We have a great number of students that go into the field of art, different, you know, majors in art. Why do we have that? Because we have a great art program and we want to try and continue to have these great programs. We have a lot of kids going into school for criminal justice, leadership, why, because we have a great program there for those kids. So, we're trying to continue to have these kind of mini-majors that we have here in the high school to encourage kids and, and build them up and this is just a way for us to, to build up the DECA program.
Unfortunately, I have to come back to that question on the third.
We'll be here.
I know, thank you. Okay, why don't you move on to, uh-
I'm sorry, Mike. Um, you, you were discussing the changes to the curriculum with this existing courses that I'd like to have questions, I'd like to ask about this.
Sure.
Okay, okay. Um, uh, since we're on this section, there's, there's, um, there's what I consider pretty impressive computer courses here. I mean, the, the Computer Ventures, one through four, including networking and, and troubleshooting and operating systems.
Remember, these are courses we could, we, we can offer if the interest is there.
Well, that's, that's what I was going to ask. I mean, I haven't, haven't talked to any student at all who's ever, I mean, this, this sounds like a school that I want to go to, but I don't know anyone that's taking these courses. Are they, are they being offered like right now?
They can be offered if the interest is there. Matter of fact, one of our techs, uh, for the district, uh, took all four of those courses when he was in high school and he now works for our tech department. So, it's available, it basically, it's based on the interest.
When, when do you know the interest?
We'll know the interest in late April, when all the students', uh, forms are turned back in regards to course selections.
So they just like check off, you know, forms?
So our guidance department does, um, the recruiting. They go, as I mentioned, into the history classrooms and talk about the programs and the program of studies and the courses that we can offer. Um, as, uh, Mr. Swett said, you know, we took some off because we, we don't, we want it to be a realistic view of what we can offer, not what we offered five, 10 years ago, what we can offer right now, uh, based on the infrastructure and, and the potential staffing that we have.
Maybe I'll discuss it with you offline, but I'd like to see what courses, I mean, this is a great list of courses, but they're not all being taught.
Correct.
So, I'd like to know, maybe later, just highlight the ones.
Maybe what we could do is, end of April, I could kinda give you a rundown of the courses that we're hoping to offer based on student interest, and then that will still be tweaked based on staffing levels.
Yeah, but I'm still curious to know what's not being offered, what's not being taught this year that's in this list.
Sure.
Because there's a lot of stuff that I consider pretty impressive, and it's a shame that no one's taking advantage of it.
It's all on the students. The beauty now is that we have a new schedule. So, some of the courses that maybe we weren't able to run because students were in study halls or things of those nature, now, you know, they're required to bulk up their transcript and to take some of these elective courses, hopefully, high-interest courses.
I mean, that's where the jobs are. I mean, come on, you know?
That's right, and a lot of these kids take the course, and then they have an interest, and they wanna pursue that interest after high school.
Yeah, all right.
I'll set to move on to ELA. Okay.
Okay, ELA, the main course that we have a lot of interest from the students to create, and again, this is a student-driven process. They really enjoyed the Film Studies I, and they were looking to take another half-year of Film Studies at another grade level. This is a course where the students are really dissecting. Some of it is watching films and answering, and a lot of it is on their own time. They have to watch films, come back, there's assessment, there's reflection. They basically, using a lot of assessment in the class. They also look at media manipulation, subject matter, and the potential effects on society. They take a look at the novels that have been adapted to the widescreen. And so, that's kinda the basis. I know you saw the narrative. And this is a course that we do have one section, the Film Studies I, we have one section that we offered for both semesters this year, and it's a lot of reading text as well. And that's the.
So, that's the only new course?
That's the only new course in the ELA.
Film Studies II.
Correct.
I'm sorry, Mike.
It's okay. This is more of a general question, but I could ask it at any, any one of these. But when you come up with a new course, like what's the, what's the process for that? In other words, like who says, yeah, this is a legitimate course that you can get credit for?
So, there's different, there's no one-size-fits-all in regards to the process. This one in particular was student-driven. The, the business course was, I'm not gonna say, I brought up the idea, but people like Brian, Cindy Sylvia, Debbie Freitas, they ran with it. And so, that was, I guess you would say, staff-driven. You know, there were some, as we talked about last week, that were mass core-driven. And so, this is, it's varied as far as, you know, why it's created. Department heads, obviously, as well, omitted them. They're a big part of it. They may see a need. So, it could be anyone. But the bottom line is it's, it's, for the most part, it's a student-driven process, whether it be, in this example, you know, there's a, they want an interest to move on and dig a little deeper into this course, and a half-year just wasn't enough.
So, you know, you come up with the curriculum and stuff, and I mean, the syllabus, I guess.
Right.
And like who decides, okay, you know, here's, here's, we're gonna have this new course. It's worth two and a half credits, and take it, and you get your two and a half credits.
Right. So, the, basically, the department head will work with the teacher to create a curriculum to align it to the National Core. They'll go through what they're gonna incorporate in regards to film, the assessment pieces that are gonna be included. Definitely, there's a syllabus, but it's the curriculum that's really the nuts and bolts to the, to the course.
Does the state ever come in and review it and say, listen, that's, you can't have a course on X? You know, this is not, this is basket weaving, you know, you can't do that.
No, the state wouldn't, you know, review it, but NEAS would take a look at the course offerings, obviously. And, you know, that's, that's kinda the process, obviously, go in front of the school committee as well.
So, basically, if NEAS doesn't complain, it stays?
I don't think they're gonna, they would complain, but they wanna see a varied course offerings, and they wanna see electives as well.
They wanna, they wanna see student-driven course selection. That was one of their recommendations, basically.
If students wanted to have a course on scrapbooking, how would that go?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the.
If students wanna have a course on scrapbooking, how would that, how would that develop?
If we can align it with the art frameworks and curriculum, we could, you know, there's something that could be done.
And call it year booking?
Scrapbooking.
Year booking.
We do have a year book.
There is a year book.
That's, that was kinda my point.
Right.
But anyway, I just wanted to know the process and if there was any accountability for who decides that it's a legitimate course or not. And basically, we can come up with whatever we want, and maybe if NEAS says something about it, you know, we.
But remember, NEAS is only gonna be visiting once every 10 years for that intense visit. You know, I think we've got, and with this course in particular, we've got a foundation already established with a course that's well-run, has a great curriculum. We can't fit enough students in the class. Now, obviously, there's a prerequisite for this class in particular, but the kids, they enjoy the assessments, they enjoy the course, they enjoy the instructor, and that's why it's been a success.
All right, now you answer my question.
Thank you.
Roger?
I would just add to that, that the oversight is also with the teachers, the administration, the superintendent, and also it has to come here for us to vote on it. So, I think that, that's a whole level of oversight on this also. So, there's a.
There's a lot of filters.
Right, there's a lot of factors that go into it.
Okay, no, thank you.
Is there a companion course to literature from the female perspective?
You looking for literature from the male perspective?
Just asking.
There is not, and. Yeah, right, the Contemporary Writers is the only comparable, compatible, I guess.
Let's move on.
Okay. Okay, so, we're moving on to the fine arts. And we have Creative Arts and Learning, and this involves a lot of human development. And the students in class are gonna analyze a lot of work. There's a lot of hands-on, obviously, in the art department, a lot of hands-on activities. And there's a portfolio as well at the end that includes their sketchbook, homework, and art history research. It's something that, with the mass core, we're looking to offer more art courses, high-interest art courses, as now, previously, our requirement was a half-year or half a unit. Now, it's a full unit or a full year, depending on how you count that. And so, that's an art class that we're looking to add. The music department is also looking to add the fundamentals of music, and this is kind of an introductory course to the music and the world around us. And it's aimed at, to have students desire to learn more about the music, the underlying structure and the history, and of course, the cultural impact. And then, so that's the fundamentals of music. And then, on the next page, we have the music appreciation. And again, it's similar to previous course, but this course is to understand what they're hearing and to listen to different forms of music. And the emphasis is on the elements of the music, the form, the composure, terminology, and the different music styles. So, we're hoping that we can get more of our students involved in the music department. It's, we have a great instructor and a great department and a great facility, and we're hoping to increase our numbers that are, of students that are involved in the music to use that as their venue to meet the mass core in the area of the art.
Anything on fine arts?
I've got a couple of questions on fine arts and a couple of pieces of a little confusion. The, if I remember correctly, the graduation requirement in the past was, was it a half-year or a full year of applied or fine arts?
It was a half-year.
But they could, they could satisfy that by either an applied art course or a fine art course? Is that correct?
Correct.
Why did you, why has there been a choice to eliminate the option of a fine arts? Because it still counts under, it still counts under the mass core.
Right.
Why would you eliminate a whole field of artistic study?
We base the decisions on what to offer based on student, you know, student interest over the last few years.
Are you saying there's no interest in applied arts?
I'm not saying there's not an interest, but we also have to have the staffing as well.
Well, see, that's the wrong reason to drop a course. I mean, if we need the staffing, then we gotta go out and get the staffing. I mean, if we, if.
I would love to, I would love to have the staffing.
If we're running, if we're running a program, and it's, and the elective program is an experiential program, and you've got, you've got sign-ups for a course to eliminate applied arts as part of that artistic requirement, to me, just flies, is a fly-in the ointment. Because basically, we wanna do what you wanna expand experiential education, not constrict it. And from where I sit, we've just constricted it. Because now, they cannot use applied arts to satisfy that course requirement. And I have a real problem with that. The second, the second thing that I would like to know is, are we currently, are we currently exempting students that want to bypass the foreign language or art requirement for those students that are technically enrolled in a Chapter 74 program?
There is that option. No one's appealed.
Do we currently do it?
We can.
Are the students aware of it?
Yes, they are. They're made aware of it by the guidance department. And most of those students, because of their goals, are in the foreign language.
Right.
But it's still an option, and we have students with specific IEPs that appeal that requirement.
No, again, not to beat a dead horse, but I have a problem with limiting and constricting experiential education, and I see expansion in the art program. And for all intents and purpose, all right, I see the applied arts program not committed to.
Right, and we did try and move some of the applied arts into the fine arts. You may recognize some courses that are now in the fine arts that.
Well, I don't care what department it's in, as long as the kids have a chance to expand on their interests.
You know, I'd love to add another teacher, and, you know, I think you know exactly where that person would go. But, you know, when you've cut in the last five years, you know, double digits number of teachers, it's tough to offer all the courses you'd like to offer.
Well, I understand that, too, but I also understand that we've got some courses with seven and eight kids in it, too. Enough. Thank you. I have a problem with this part of it, so I'm just wanting you guys to add it there.
Thanks. Well, how would, how do you wanna proceed with?
I don't know. I just, I just, I just have a fundamental, it's a philosophical problem with constricting experiential education offerings. And I think it's a mistake not to require, or not to allow, applied arts to satisfy that artistic requirement.
I'm still not sure how you wanna proceed.
I don't know. I don't know. I'll think on it.
Okay. Any other questions related to fine arts?
I threw you to Dr. Sylvia. Did I just hear something about bypassing the foreign language requirement?
Yeah, that's in the core. That's stipulated in the core.
Right, and the, so.
If they're, if they're enrolled in a career or technical program.
So, if, only if they're involved in a career and technical program? So, if those kids don't, if they don't take the foreign language, then is that like, do we uncheck that when we say that we have X amount of kids that graduated meeting the core?
Correct.
And that's probably held against us, right?
They are meeting the core.
But no, no, he's saying, no.
Well, unless, as Dr. Sylvia said, they're in a Chapter 74 program, which.
Allows for them to bypass that.
Marketing is part of, is a Chapter 74 program.
So, then we wouldn't get dinged on it?
We wouldn't get dinged on that one.
And if you believe that the state can handle that kind of subtlety, so that the data is put in so that we don't get dinged, and I have a bridge to sell you.
We gotta trust but verify.
Anything else, Mike?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, foreign language, as noted, for this year, there are no changes. And moving on to the.
Excuse me, Scott, if a, if a student wanted to take a foreign language online, no problem, correct?
No problem whatsoever. Matter of fact, we have, I believe at this point, three that are taking it online.
Thank you.
And most of that was based on logistics of their schedule, and they were taking some advanced courses.
Okay. How many, I had one of my tennis players say she had to leave early for practice 'cause she was going to a dual enrollment class at college. You know, that's not good, Scott.
We'll work, we'll work on those tennis players.
Just kidding, she's a great kid. How many dual enrollment kids do you have at the moment?
I believe we have a handful. Debbie, you may have a.
Five students currently.
Just five, and I get one of the five.
We'll get you, we'll get you two next year. There's some great kids that are involved in that dual enrollment.
I know they are. I know they are. Thank you. Scott, did you have a question?
Yeah, I forgot one. The other thing, too, is, you know, we've got, I've always been impressed with the drama program, but yet, we don't have a formal drama program in the school. Couldn't that be part of the finance offering if we were to develop a drama program as part of the elective circuit?
Absolutely. It's done in some other schools in our conference that we compete against.
Is that something that we're looking at? Because, you know, we've got a bunch of kids that are really interested in drama, and there really is no outlet for them within the confines of the regular school day.
Something we used to have.
Yes, we did.
You were there.
We had, we used to have a lot of things.
Yes, we did. Right.
You know, it's, it's just, you know, that's the whole point of this. This is the part that really does, really does bother me, is the fact that, you know, we had a whole lot of things that we don't have anymore. And, you know, I just think that we ought to really allow for a little creativity, if you will, or ingenuity, to allow these kids to satisfy these electives in a variety of different ways.
Sure, sure. And we've, and we've got a great drama program, as you alluded to earlier.
We do, but there is really no way for them to expand or explore that during the regular school day. And that's, that's a huge field of interest for a lot of our kids.
Oh, my gosh, definitely, definitely.
I have a, I have a niece who's big-time into it and still living off her parents at age 30. Sorry, go ahead.
Okay, we'll move on to math on that note. So, this year, we are offering, excuse me, the Algebra I honors to our freshmen. The students going into freshman year, a lot of the students with, excuse me, with the previous curriculum at the middle school would jump onto our geometry honors, so we have to offer that for the freshmen. We also have, to align with the mass core, but also to challenge our students that are looking to go on to full-year colleges, we're offering our pre-calculus. And we're breaking it up into two halves, which I'm pretty excited about because it's gonna really cause the student, it's gonna require the students to stay focused for the whole year, and it's also gonna give them some flexibility. So, in the first half of the year, we'll have pre-calculus functions, and we'll have two levels, college prep and honors, and that's a half-year. And then, that can be combined with our pre-calculus trigonometry, or which can be an honors or a CP level. And we're also offering a statistics course, which is a half-year. This is an elective. We haven't had a great number of electives in the math department, so I'm excited about that. And there's also, will allow for some flexibility for some of the juniors and seniors in regards to a half-year course in math. So, those are the, the new courses prerequisite for the pre-calculus courses for all, for both of them at, for, at two different levels, is the Algebra II, and the same thing for the statistics.
Questions on the math? I'm gonna take advantage of the fact that we have you and Chris and Dr. Vinovich all here in the same room. We're going to hear a little bit, I think, are we gonna hear about PARC later?
A little bit about it, yes.
Could you reconcile for me PARC, MCAS, Accuplacer? That whole thing is, is PARC an improvement with respect to, as compared to MCAS in terms of what our kids are gonna be exposed to when they get to Accuplacer? I know you and I have talked about Accuplacer in terms of being available to the juniors. Can you talk just briefly on that whole subject?
Sure, I think the, there's more parallels, I think, with the PARC and the Accuplacer. So, I think it's.
There are.
Yeah, I think it's going, we're going in the right direction. I know Chris can talk more about that as well. And I, and Brian may even wanna talk about, we had a group of kids go down last week to Cape Cod to actually take the Accuplacer, and he's gonna come up with some, some numbers from that as well. So, I think it's, it's moving in a direction so that we can use that as a tool, not only to evaluate what we're doing at the high school, but also to evaluate weaknesses so that the students don't have that shock when they go into the freshman year of math in college. Hopefully, they'll be, they'll be better prepared in regards to the programs that we're offering, changes in curriculum, that we're doing the alignment with the National Common Core as well. So, I think it's an improvement, and I think it's moving more towards the 21st century. As you know, it's gonna be all web-based, online. And so, we're getting ready for that. We're not ready at this point, but we will be ready when the time comes. Anything else, Debbie?
Chris, anything you wanna add on that subject? Join the crowd.
I think you have to understand the PARC tests will be subject- or content-based tests. There'll be Algebra I test, end-of-the-year test, geometry end-of-the-year test, Algebra II end-of-the-year test. And there may very well in the future be a pre-calculus end-of-the-year test. We don't know. Those, those tests are, I think, more performance-based. You'll see greater emphasis on applications. It will be two-part tests. And right now, we don't know, we were talking about this today, we don't actually know if they will take the place of MCAS in Massachusetts or be in addition to MCAS. For this year and next year, we still have MCAS. The freshman, grade nine students this year will be taking the first PARC Algebra II test, and that's where it will begin in the year after next. So, quite a bit of work to do.
Yeah.
We're moving towards, with those performance-based tests and with those performance tasks of MCAS as well, open response, et cetera. I think you'll find the kids better prepared because we've moved to the new frameworks as well. 2011 frameworks.
They're better prepared for the Accuplacer.
Right. The Accuplacer as well will be addressed in the content of the courses because with the new frameworks, we will achieve, we will reach the content that the Accuplacer covers. Brian, Nubrega, and myself have been trained to give the Accuplacer, but we haven't actually done it at the high school. We were trained at 4C several years ago. Accuplacer goes farther in the content of Algebra II than we've, we have achieved or attained in the past. It was a different focus. We will, we will cover that material now with the new frameworks.
When you say now, so this year that we're in now?
We've already reached that, yes.
Great, thank you.
The last piece on these new courses, as well specifically the pre-calculus, Chris has been working with community colleges to have an articulation agreement with these courses as well, which could allow for some of the students to receive some credit or be clapped out of some courses that they would have to take. And, uh, so that's, we're working on that, that's pretty exciting, and that's, uh, part of the reasoning for our change.
Any questions on the math? Thank you.
Okay. Physically, education and health is going to stay the same with no changes. And moving on to science, we have two new courses. We have an Earth Science CP, uh, which is a course, uh, that has been offered at different years. Uh, it's been, um, unfortunately, it has not been our course of studies for a few years now. It's another lab-based science, the students are required to have three years of lab-based science. So this will help us out with having some flexibility for students to, again, meet the Mass Corps requirements. And a new course that our, our students are very interested in, obviously computers. And, uh, we actually have one of our, our department head who couldn't be here tonight, uh, is actually very involved in getting a second masters in STEM. And this was a course that, uh, he brought back to his classroom, and there was a lot of excitement from the students, and this is the intro to the computer science. And, uh, this is a CP-level course. There's a lot of problem-solving, uh, the focus on learning not just how to use computers, but how to solve, uh, problems, programming, and there's an opportunity, uh, for them to, uh, use the Scratch and move into some programming. And I believe it's a C++ certification, but Mr. Flaherty may be able to help me out with that.
Well, it's, what, 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 um, confuses me is that you say, you're saying all these other-
At one point, yes.
Computer-related courses are either subscribed or not, you know, not available because there wasn't enough interest. And we're, we're adding, we're adding this course, which looks great, but I mean, it's, it's pretty advanced. I mean, it says intro, but it, I mean, you're talking C++.
Right.
I mean, that's, I mean, do you expect people to just jump right into that, or?
Being that's an introductory level and it's open to grades nine through twelve, I think there'll be some interest.
Yeah.
And again, these are all courses that we can offer. Um, it's based on if the students are interested, I'm, you know, I'll definitely be able to report back to you on the interest level on a lot of these new courses.
I'm, I'm gonna have a whole bunch of questions for you, like-
In April?
Over the next week, yeah, yeah, that, this is really interesting me.
Okay, and I'll be interested too to, to be able to report back to you, uh, because I know you specifically had a question in regards to which one of these new courses are we able to run based on interest? And definitely at the end of April, I'll be able to answer that for you.
And what I'd love to see too, i- i- in a department like that is, you've got, for example, the, the high school PTA. They're running a comedy show in April, right?
That's the middle school, uh, it's middle school, high school, but it's for the middle school in April. We, ours is in the fall.
Okay, okay, so you, you know what I mean, it's a comedy show. And, and it would be great if someone from the high school came up a nice little banner in Photoshop and said, hey, put this on a bunch of websites. But, I mean, does anyone, is, is Photoshop being offered? It's in, it's in the description.
Right, this year it was not offered, but it has been offered in the past.
All right, I wish we, I mean, I really wish we could leverage that, that sort of thing. But, I mean, you can't, you can't make the interest if it's not there, I mean.
Right, and that's, you know, as, as Dr. Sylvia said, you know, you don't wanna have these, these low numbers. There are some classes that we're, we're trying to, to keep afloat. And, uh, you know, we're hoping the interest is there and it's not waning.
Yeah. All right.
And that's it.
Any follow-up questions? Cliff?
Just one quick question. Why the redundancy in terms of computer education? The majority of the computer education is done in, uh, in the tech ed department, and yet this one's in the science department.
We're just trying to move forward to twenty-first century. The, um, the STEM is, is something we're looking for, we're working with GN for the future.
I got it.
And, uh, so that's kinda what we're looking for.
Thank you.
To Mike's point, when it's available, uh, a report of the classes you actually anticipate that you're going to teach, and the number of people, students enrolled, would be a very interesting report.
Yeah, I, I think, just to make sure it's accurate, I'd, I'd ask that we, uh, do that presentation after we know our current level of staffing for next year. I think to Mike's question, it, it, obviously, we, it's gonna be interesting to see which one of the, how many of these new courses we have enough interest to run, but I think the bottom line is the bottom line.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, that makes perfect sense.
Thank you.
And, and I'd, I'd like both, I'd like to see like next year's, and I'd like to see this year's. I mean, I, like I said, I look at this cour- course, listing of courses, and I wanna know what was being offered and what was decided not to be taught.
Sure.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
And we, and we do, you know, we try and make the, the decisions based on the students, you know, every once in a while, specifically with science, because of the so many, there's so many certifications that are needed for, for different areas, it does get tough. But I'd say, uh, you know, we try and accommodate the students whenever possible, and it's obviously more often than not.
Giving yourself a cushion, when do you think that report would be available?
When will my budget be available?
What the school improvement plan?
Excuse me?
About when his school improvement come, he has to be back.
Is that like May?
June.
June for me.
Does that work for you?
That'd be great if, if you're okay with that. I mean, obviously, then we'll, we'll have definitive numbers and he'll be as, he'll be as accurate as can be. So I, I'd rather give you accurate information than what-ifs based on funding.
Yep, that sounds appropriate, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, and, oh, are we, sorry.
Do we go to, uh, social studies?
There was no, there were no changes, but you wanted to ask.
Yeah, I saw a comment.
Okay.
Help me out on this. JROTC, the acronym appears to have more letters than students that are involved in that. How many, how many students are in, in JROTC, and, um, how many instructors, so, on the average?
There's two instructors, the military pays for half of each instructor, and our numbers are the highest they've been in the last five years. Um, I did not research the exact numbers, but Mr. St. Julian would probably be able to give you a ballpark, but I, I, I know it's the most we've had.
We're, uh, we need to be at ten percent, and I think we're about eighty.
So the, the army, the army requires us to have at least ten percent of the students involved, and ten percent would ballpark be about sixty-one students, and we're at eighty.
So the four or five we see at events is, is just a portion of that?
Right, what, they have, um, community service requirements. So for instance, at the town meeting, um, you, you see the honor guard, uh, with the flag and, and, uh, and, uh, you'll see out in the community, there's different programs, um, that they're involved in, and they're required to do so many hours of community service. It's just like the National Honor Society, you'll see a few of the kids here, a few of the kids there, but it's, uh, if, if you, and I'd be glad to forward it to you, the, um, Veterans Day Parade, I think you saw ninety-five percent of the kids marching, and it was, uh, it was a large group, uh, you know, coming up, uh, Marion Road, uh, from Main Street. It was, uh, it was exciting to see, it was the lar- as I said, this is the largest group we've had in many years, and I think almost every one of them was, uh, was at the Veterans Day Parade.
Um, I'm happy for that clarification because, uh, my perception was there, there were only four kids in that program-
(laughing)
With, with two instructors, and, and you answered my next question, that there, there is funding, uh, that comes from, from the, um, military. Uh, but the final thing is, uh, when I watch them, it's, I think it's pretty impressive, uh, as to what they do. It's a matter of building character and everything, and I just wanna compliment the staff on, on an excellent job and an excellent program.
Thank you.
Well said.
I, I'll just, uh, restate what I said at the last, at the last meeting. I, there was probably fifteen of them at Red Robin doing the fundraiser. I went to that, it was like they took over the place, so.
You should see the check that came in.
I bet.
They had a very successful night.
That's great.
And that is great.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, department heads for taking some time out of your evening.
I thought about my problem. Do you wanna do it now or later?
Dr. Sylvia has a problem he'd like to discuss, and apparently it involves Mr. Palladino.
Yeah. Um, well, it's, it's still on that applied arts, fine arts, uh, uh, graduation requirement. A couple of, uh, Mr. Palladino made a couple of comments that really, I wanted to process, and, um, sat, I, I wanna use his own words, providing flexibility to meet the Mass Corps. Those are his words, and that's exactly what this would do, to provide you with flexibility and meet in Mass Corps. Because it has little to do with staffing and more to do with giving kids choices. Because once, once an applied arts course is full, it's full. It's full.
Correct.
Whether you have one teacher or ten teachers, once it's full, it's full.
Correct.
And that forces them to take an art course, if, if that's all they can get. So I think it has little to do with staffing and probably more to do with providing flexibility to meet the Mass Corps. And I think it, it allows kids a different pathway to meet the, the art Mass Corps. So I, I personally don't see why, uh, we can't maintain that the way it was, to satisfy that, uh, graduate, graduation requirement by either a fine art or an applied art.
Scott, if we did that-
Mm-hmm.
If you, uh, this would be adding back the course, is that an accurate statement?
No, the courses are there.
I don't know, the course is there, it's in the, in the business department.
But just meeting the-
What you're requiring.
Just meeting the graduation requirement.
It's under industrial technology.
Oh, I see, okay. So what would be involved in meeting Dr. Sylvia's concerns?
Uh, re- rewriting the course of description, um, and just-
Course description for what?
Aligning it with the Mass Corps. It's just a little bit of paperwork, it's not, um-
A huge issue for- But applied arts are already aligned.
What's that? You're right, we'd have to investigate it, absolutely, just to make sure it's, it's aligned. But I, it'd be a little bit of work on our part just to make sure it meets the-
All right.
I know it's aligned.
Okay, okay, uh, I will-
But I'll, I'll defer, and I'll use, I'll defer to that good judgment, but I'm just saying that, um, if they feel that I'm right, and the graduation requirement can be satisfied, uh, by both applied arts and fine arts, or a combination of the two, uh, maybe they should come back to us and, uh, we can, we can readjust our position on this.
I, I really, I, I would respectfully ask that, um, we could be given the flexibility to move that, uh, without another presentation, just because, uh, we've already moved this, uh, two weeks from the time we had hoped to move this to-
No, you're not following me, Scott.
Okay.
I wanna, I wanna approve what you've given us today.
Right, and I wanna, you to approve it with the flexibility of me moving it if it meets the need, if I, if I can do that, if I can do that.
That's right, condition, and, and if it doesn't, that's fine.
Right.
But you've gotta come back to us if it doesn't, and it proves to me why it doesn't.
Okay.
Correct?
That's fair.
All right.
Let's not ask Scott to come back, aren't you-
Oh, no, no, I wanna vote on this tonight.
Excuse me?
I wanna vote on this tonight.
Well, I was just asking Dr. Rabinovich whether we actually-
Are you sure we need a vote on this?
Need a vote on this.
I'm not clear from passion memory.
Traditionally, um, traditionally, and state law says all courses with the approval of the school committee, that's state law. We approve courses.
Mike, Mike has a comment.
That's fine.
Um, to Rhonda's point, I thought that's what she said earlier, that's the whole check and balance accountability thing.
Yes, okay.
All right.
All right, so with, with your understanding that, um, this is gonna be investigated and they'll report back to Dr. Rabinovich, and they'll report to you.
That's fine.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to approve the course of studies as amended for, for the next calendar, next fiscal year.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Scott.
Mr. Tatro.
Uh, I think Tenney and then Cliff.
Yes. That was right, that's right.
And, and while, while they're getting ready, can I just kind of offer a thought?
To whom?
On ca- on-
On, on curriculum.
You wanna make a, offer a thought to the, to the school committee?
Yes, to the school committee.
Go ahead.
All right. Um, this made a lot, that made a lot of sense, what, what Rhonda had said about us being a check and balance, you know, to, to approve and unimprove, uh, disapprove, I guess, um, courses. And what stuck out, it was kinda mentioned at the, the district review that we did, that we just went over last we, last school committee meeting. It mentioned how that was within our purview when we took away the, um, the social studies from middle school. And I guess that, that didn't come before the board, or the board kinda didn't get involved in that. I didn't follow it at the time, but that, that's what the report said. Is that, was that, is that true, is that, did the board like-
No.
Vote on that?
We present-
I, I believe they said it was under my purview, and I allowed the principal to do what he was going to do.
But they said that too? But they said the school committee didn't get involved, and then I'll have to bring it back up again.
I, I don't, I don't agree with that.
Did the school committee take a vote?
No.
Oh.
But it was presented to us.
Okay.
I believe during curriculum committee, perhaps.
But to Cliff's point, I mean, by law, should we, should we have voted to remove social studies at the time? I mean, if we have to vote to add it, do we have to vote to take it away?
The law reads that all courses that are offered in public schools have to be approved by the school committee.
Yeah.
Now, those are courses. Now, there is an assumption that you have a core at the elementary, middle school level, and social studies is one of them, obviously.
The, the interesting point here, it's one thing to approve a course. It's another thing to approve the deletion of a course.
I know, yeah.
That's a different authority.
And it doesn't, and that is not mentioned in the law.
Exactly. So-
Oh, yeah, no, that's why, I just, while we're on the same subject-
Yeah, yeah.
Adding courses, I was thinking, well, let me remove them.
Right.
Thank you.
Um, and I, I think frankly, as a result of budgetary constraints, and those are unknown at this point, with all due respect to, to Scott and the department heads, we're in a situation of flux at the moment.
Oh, yeah.
And I'm not sure what the reality is going to be by the time the dust settles.
And we have been for the last four years.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Jeff, welcome.
Hi.
How are you?
Good.
Glad to hear it. Is it gonna snow tomorrow?
No.
Good.
Not in Wareham, it's not.
Even better.
(laughing) I, I don't know, I don't control the weather, but a positive thinking about it does, does keep the weather away.
God, I'm gonna spout all those rumors that you do.
We were very fortunate to, uh, to have not missed a school day this week, so-
Yeah.
Like some other towns.
Okay. Um, this is the, a dis- presentation of the, uh, three-tier busing concept that was put together, I think it's fair to say, by Dr. Rabinovich and yourself, is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so proceed.
Um, at the last meeting, this was briefly brought up, um, and I was asked to look into it more depth for, for, for this school committee meeting, so I went ahead and you all got a, you got two, two charts, that, charts that were put together. One is what we currently do, kind of explaining, uh, where our buses go at what times. And the second chart is the three-tier proposals, the impact on students, uh, and time changes, uh, a- at, at the school level. So just to go over the, do you want me to go over the, the current one now, or just go right into-
Briefly. Very briefly.
Very, happily.
(laughing)
Our current schedule. Um, high school, middle school, uh, go on the same buses, twenty-one buses. And they get, um, and, and just to clarify again, as I always do at every single meeting, this is only regarding our full-size regular school buses. Okay? So this whole presentation is strictly to do with full-size regular school buses, just to clarify. So we currently use, um, twenty-two buses to drop off our high school and, and middle school students. Seven-twenty and seven-thirty, they go in together on the same buses, and then they continue on to their elementary runs. All, all of them but one who then goes and does, uh, some, some different programs in town that need to be shuttled back and forth to different locations, the Y, and, and he also does the, um, School to Career Program. So that's why that bus does not have an elementary run. Uh, again, in the afternoon, middle school, high school students get on the same bus around two o'clock. Uh, we, you know, two, 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 uh, I think we usually hear Ronnie on the radio, it's two o'clock-
Two oh four.
Shut down the road, two oh four. Um, and then those buses continue on to do their, their elementary runs, the same number. And this is bringing all students who need transportation to and from school, regardless of where they live. All students eligible in town take transportation. So one of, one of the purposes here was to, one, reduce the number of vehicles that we currently use. We had to look in, in that, uh, and, and how to maximize ridership with, with the proposed changes. And get into a three-tier system to address some of the safety concerns that some of the fifth-grade parents had, um, at, at some of the public hearings that we had. So it, it took a lot of work, especially to get down to the sixteen buses. But what we're proposing is that we would have, and you have this all in front of you. We would have eight drivers start the day, uh, with just their high school students. They drop off at the high school around seven-ten in the morning. Those same eight drivers would go out and get middle school students, drop them off at the middle school. Now, now at the middle school, we're now gonna be talking about fifth through eighth grade. Drop those students off around seven-forty, then continue directly into, uh, these eight would go into a decas run.
So just to be clear, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think it's important.
Yep.
So this would be approximately fifteen minutes earlier at the high school-
Correct.
And approximately 15 minutes later at the middle school.
About 10 minutes later.
Five minutes.
Five, is it five?
Currently drop off at 7:35 at the middle school.
Yeah, they don't drop off at the same time, they drop off at the high school and then they move down and they sit.
And there's a little lag, okay, fair enough, good, thank you.
Yep.
Just the same point of clarification, so I can understand that the times for pickup and drop off, but do any of the schools change start times with this system?
The high school will.
So.
And the release time at the high school would be affected too by 10 minutes.
The start time and the release time?
Yes, but that would be the only school that would have a time change.
By how, you said 10 minutes?
10 minutes.
10 minutes.
So they would go 10 minutes earlier?
And they get out 10 minutes.
They'd love that.
For the good of the system.
Coaches love it.
I'm sure the athletic department would appreciate a little bit earlier release time.
Absolutely.
And now to, then we'd also have four drivers who do the same high school, same middle school, but these four drivers go to Minnet Forest, because each elementary school would have eight buses, so of the 16 we start with, at the high school level, eight would go to decas, four would go to Minnet, now Minnet is a little further, some of the parts of town, so an additional four buses would have to be brought in for just the middle school level. So this is where the 16 buses come in, so we got 12 that go out to start, and then we have an additional four that start later in the day to do the furthest parts of town for the middle schools, the ones the furthest away, so that maybe they can extend it a little bit because of the distance from the school, and then those four would go right into a Minnet Forest drop off.
That's really the key, isn't it? By having that flexibility to be able to give the extra time to get the outskirts and still be able to get them to the school by 7:40, that's the key to making this work, isn't it?
It is. No one, nobody, and we've talked about this extensively within the office as well, no one says this is going to be easy.
Right.
This is going to take a lot of logistical work, it's going to take a lot of, not only computer work, which is handy, but sometimes what you need to do is actually go out and drive it.
Drive it.
And stop it, and deal with the red lights, and deal with the seven lights up by the mall, and it's not going to be easy, it's going to be a challenge, it's going to be very time-consuming, and are there going to be tweaks if you guys approve this system in September? Yes, there are, but this is honestly a plan I think is doable.
Is there anybody who disagrees with that statement?
I have not found anybody yet, that is not to say that there is nobody, but of the people that I've asked to help with this project, and the people that I know of who have looked at, we've talked about a lot of concerns and a lot of issues, everyone thinks it is possible.
Okay, go ahead.
Anything is possible, but I'm going to tell you right now, I anticipate some major problems in terms of late to school.
Especially in Cleveland.
I mean, you're really, you're threading this really fine.
Absolutely.
Really fine.
What we're doing with this plan is maximizing driver time.
Yeah.
All right, so there is currently anywhere from 10 to 20 minutes of a layover between the drop off of the middle school and the start of the elementary school, okay, so we're now taking that 20 minutes, and we're jamming in a run, and when I say jamming, I do mean jamming.
I understand.
I mean, we're shoving it in there, and I understand that. A number of drivers, based on our research, aren't, they have about seven minutes where they're getting paid for, well, we're now maximizing their 3.92 at the end of their run. So we are taking this third tier, what should be the middle school, the one we're adding, and we are shoving it in, and it is time that most drivers do have in-between runs currently, so you're not going to see them sitting down on Merchant's Row waiting, you're not going to see them, you know, pulled over on the side of the road, you know, waiting, and they're not lazy, just they can't start their run yet, so they have to sit somewhere, down on the pier or wherever it is, that's not going to be happening, you're going to be having these buses go, 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 and the drivers go, 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 go.
Mr. Chairman, one of the things I think the committee needs to understand, when you need to solve a problem, you need to bring it to the people that are closest to the problem. Jeff, Mr. Tatro, went back to his drivers, he sat with a group of drivers to test this hypothesis to make sure it would work, so this is not something we just dreamed up and said it's going to work because of the money, we brought it back to the drivers and we said, how can we make this work so we can maximize your time and live within the budget we have so that we can use the money in that revolving account to buy vehicles to solve the problem that we have been trying to solve at this table for the last five years that I've been here, or longer.
Or longer.
So, you know, my feeling is, let's give it a try to see if it will work, his drivers think it will, and I go with the drivers, they tell you if it's going to work or it won't, they're the people out on the roads.
You all set, Jeff, with your explanation before we take questions?
The one thing I just want to add, you guys know, but people at home watching may not, with this new plan, we're reducing buses, but there will also be some walking distances, so this will affect some students. So students at the high school level and at the middle school level that live within one mile will no longer be transported.
And that's one mile as you drive it?
That is one mile from front door to front door, and.
Not as the crow flies?
And that is all middle school?
It would be driving.
That would be?
Middle and high.
Grades five through 12, anybody who lives within one mile. So we have approximate, and this is based on, you know, this year's data and trying to project next year with our computer software, that's about 45 students at the high school level, and about 83 students at, that would be what, and I'm including the fifth graders at the middle school level, so.
But some of them walk already, is that correct?
Well, they dropped off by their parents.
No, but I mean, are we picking up all the middle school kids right now?
If they want to ride, there is no, we currently have no walking requirements.
Okay.
So do some of them walk, it's very possible, but I don't know.
Okay.
So it is going to impact about 130, 140 students.
Okay, and just to be clear, what this is going to accomplish is you will reduce the fleet from approximately 22 to 16, I'm saying 22 because you list 22 drivers.
Yes.
In the current, so that means you can take six presumably 1998 buses or equivalent aged buses out of the fleet, that much less work for the mechanics, that many fewer drivers, and you estimate that this will save well over $100,000 a year, is that a fair statement?
It should bring us close to what we were, I think, being proposed budgeted, so about 120, somewhere in there.
Yeah, the approximate distance between, difference between what we asked for.
And what we're proposing to begin.
And what the town said they could do for us.
That's correct.
Which frees up the entire revolver to purchase new or used vehicles to replace the aged vehicles on an ongoing basis.
Rather than using it to fund, yes, that'd be correct.
Okay. Questions? Ken?
Was there any type of feedback from potential parents whose children will now have to walk?
I have not spoken to any parents, no. As far as I know, this is the first time this information's been made available to everybody on a mass level, so I have not heard from parents.
Well, I think we've talked about it at this table at least two other times.
Well, we've talked about walking distances, numbers of times, including at the public hearing. And no one.
It was all hypothetical, but.
No, we went in brief detail, but enough detail, and then I don't think, Mr. Chair, you were satisfied with the level of detail, so I think you wanted to come back with.
Correct.
With something more, you know, it was kind of quick.
Yes.
And this, actually, I think there was more detail at the last one with the presentations, with the slides and everything, and the distances.
Well, the maps.
The maps, yeah, and the charts, this is, you know, another opportunity, but certainly the public shouldn't, I mean, anyone watching that meeting would have been aware that, you know, we're looking at cutting back, and there's going to be walking distances, and we had a discussion on, you know, the Oakdale community and the Swift Beach community, and how they're going to be impacted, we decided at that time to not vote either way and stick with that status quo vote of current service of like 1.6 million, and I at the time mentioned that I want to keep it that way, just to give it, put it in the lap of town meeting voters, and I, frankly, I don't, I think we're going to end up doing this, but I want it to be, I want town meeting to have that choice, as sort of an aside, I mean, you've done a tremendous job, I mean, this is, you've really sharpened your pencil, Mr. Tatro and Dr. Rabinevich, this, I mean, I feel bad, I don't really give you the credit you deserve, I mean, we discussed this because we're always talking about whether or not we're going to privatize, and we talk about you almost, as if you're not even in the room, and I'm sorry about that, but you've done a tremendous job, you really have, and this is, I mean, aside from the potential of having those kids walk, it's, you've done a great job.
Well said.
Yeah.
Rhonda?
I don't know if Ken was down, but I.
I'm sorry, Ken, did you get cut off?
Go ahead.
No, Ken, go ahead.
No.
Well, I'm, it's, okay. I'm going to follow up on something that Kenny said, though, yes, we've talked about it at this table, yes, we've talked about hypotheticals, but the question that I had that I think goes along with Ken says is, have or do we plan to communicate to, specifically to the parents that are going to be affected by this, or is it just going to be a, you know, I wouldn't know if I lived in Swift Beach, because we talked about Swift Beach, and some will be affected, some won't, so I agree that I'd like to hear from the parents that are going to be affected by this, to be able, and I know that it's not going to all be pretty, but how are we planning to communicate with those students, those parents that are going to be affected, the 45 and the 83?
Once a level of service is decided upon, then we'll have to address parent contact, but at this point, we haven't even decided on a level of service.
Okay, so I know that we have done a public hearing, but it was a public hearing, again, for hypothetical, there were three different options and all of that, I'd like to suggest that we do a public hearing, or that we at least communicate with these parents upfront and give them the opportunity to speak at public participation.
It is easy enough for me to go into my computer routing system and hit the names of all 130 of these students, and print their addresses, so, you know, to find out who these students are is, for me, is very easy.
Well said.
Yep.
Ken?
First of all, I want to echo with what Mike said, is a lot of work went into this, you and Dr. Rabinevich, are you concerned about drivers trying to really meet these timelines, as my colleague, Dr. Sylvia, said, it's going to be a fine line, and then actually you're going to have concerns on safety, if drivers know I have to be at the middle school at 7:40 and at decas at a certain time, because we've now added one level of pickups, correct?
Correct.
So, that would be one of my concerns, especially when you start talking November, December, January, February, that type of thing, and my other thing is, I agree with Rhonda, is this board, I can't speak for them, might approve this, I think you guys did an excellent job, but I hate to just go ahead and approve this and then tell the parents it was approved and that's it. I know we've had hearings and things of that nature, but I don't think we're doing our due diligence just to approve this and then tell the parents that the level of service has been reduced, and that's the bottom line, so I really think, whether it's a letter, as you said, you have access to print that out, goes out to these parents, I think that's important. I, from the time I've been on this committee, I do not support any kids walking, Mr. Flaherty and I talked about a certain house, I have concerns about that, the fifth graders now at the middle school are going to be forced to, a lot of them are going to be forced to walk, I think the number you said is 80, I have a concern with that, so.
Well said.
And.
Go ahead.
Thank you. And if this does end up becoming ultimately approved, I think we'd have to then tweak the formal policy, correct, the actual bus policy?
Right. I had a lot of concerns about this when it was first proposed, for essentially the reasons that have already been articulated, which is, it just seemed like to get this kind of increase in productivity from the drivers was a phenomenal achievement, and I expected the drivers to push back and say, Jeff, this can't be done. So the fact that you have been able to not only come up with something that is such a significant cost savings to the district, and get the people who have to make it work supportive, is the biggest tribute to you that I could say, I mean, it's far easier to come up with ideas with a piece of paper and a pencil and an Excel spreadsheet, it's quite another to actually get the people who have to make it work to agree that it can be done, so my hat is off to you. Do I still have some of the concerns that Dr. Sylvia has, I suspect? Yes, but I look at this, this is sort of, you know, necessity is the mother of invention, as they say, no one really wants to create this kind of pressure situation, but the alternative to this, I mean, we're laying off teachers right and left, you know, to me, this is relatively minor compared to the impact of significant reductions in the educational opportunities, both experiential, as Cliff says routinely, as well as class size implications, so to me, we're still double, we're, excuse me, we're still half what the state says we should be doing, which is two miles, we're saying a mile, and the percentage of the children that will be impacted is small, and on top of that, this is primarily the result, these 130 children, this is primarily the result of the capacity of the buses, is that correct?
That's correct.
So if for any reason, as a result, when we made this change, we discovered that the utilization of the buses was in fact not really quite as tight as we initially anticipated, because the number of kids who were getting to school in some other way, because when I was at a school council meeting, I had one parent say, my kids have never used the bus, you know, so the number, we always sort of assume that kids, if it's available, will use it, but in fact, there are a significant number that don't, as witnessed the number of cars who go by, Viking Drive all the time, so if for some reason the capacity with the buses was not as stretched as this makes it appear, you might come back to the committee and say, you know, maybe we don't need to make it a mile, maybe we can make it a half a mile, and that would be, that would be great, if you could do that, but I'm with the superintendent on this, I think we've got a huge problem, we've been talking about it ad nauseam for more years than I can remember, and if the people who need to make this work can make it work and believe they can do it, then I think it would be irresponsible for us to deny them and you the opportunity to do that. Having said all that, the question becomes, what is the process we go forth from here? Which is to say, even if we said, let's vote on this and let's assume for the second argument that it passes, we still have a number of 1.6 million on the table that we say we need, and the truth of the matter is, we still need it, because that 1.6 million, plus the revolver, plus the operating expenses, is still needed to have an appropriately modern fleet, so we don't actually have to change the budget, we could in good conscience say, we've improved our efficiency tremendously with this change, but we still need all the money we asked for, and this is why, so I don't see approving this as necessitating a change at this moment in time in the amount of money that we are requesting for the Transportation Department. That's one person's opinion about how we might proceed. So it seems to me the first question is, do we want you to proceed, including notification of parents, with this as a plan for the fall? The second question is, do we need to address, in my opinion is we don't, the budget at this moment in time? And the third question, of course, is, if not, then when do we need to address it? And the obvious answer is after town meeting, when we decide what we've got to work, when we find out what we've got to work with, with respect to the operating budget, so after that speech, and I apologize for it, is there any questions or comments?
Well, I haven't had my turn for questions.
I'm sorry. Cliff, I was looking at you, you weren't raising your hand, so I went ahead.
Well, you know, I'm the pain in the butt, and I understand I am, but.
I think we get to determine that.
Yeah, I know, but you know what, I look at this from a totally different perspective, and I'm looking at this from several angles, the first thing is, the one thing that I asked, and before I even would consider making a decision drastic, was what was the recommendation from the Action Committee? I still haven't gotten a recommendation from the Action Committee, I haven't got a clue what the recommendation is from the Action Committee, what is it?
It hasn't made one yet.
Well, isn't that interesting? They have a lot to say, everybody in town has a lot to say.
They haven't met.
Well, it's fine, so they haven't met, okay.
We don't even know.
Because we haven't had the meeting.
Well, but also, we haven't been informed that there's an official member of the Board of Selectmen. of Selectmen that has been named to it.
Well, you know, this thing has been kicked around and kicked around and kicked around, and I'm not saying this Action Committee is the one responsible for kicking around, but it's been kicked around. And I would just like to have somebody step up and say, yeah, we support this, and no, we don't think this is really a great idea. But just like everything else, it leaves it completely, all right, up to this committee to make a decision so they can second guess it.
I think legally, that's where it is.
Well, it is. It is legally where it is. So, you know, having a recommendation from the Action Committee is just something that I thought that they would probably wanna do, given the fact that this thing has been studied, as you said, to quote you, ad nauseam. Be that as it may, the other part about this that I look at is, sure, we look at this from a budgetary perspective, but I really, I really feel in my heart of hearts, and also in my irrational brain, that it is our responsibility as a community to transport our children. It's just our responsibility. It's just like, it's our responsibility to try to provide the best possible educational opportunities for them. Those are our responsibilities. And unfortunately, time and time and time again, we're not meeting those responsibilities for the sake of the budget. Well, you know, no matter how you slice the cake, it was just proven that not going, not outsourcing the Transportation Department still saves money to the town, providing the same level of service that we're providing now still saves money to the town. And over the number of years that we've been in the transportation business, we've saved the town millions of dollars. So whether we choose this or not, whether we go with exactly what we've got right now, we're still saving the town money by operating our own fleet, so...
By the way, that's no longer in dispute, and the committee recognizes that.
Absolutely. And I admire the committee for doing that and finally coming to resolve on that issue. And that's fine. But, you know, no matter how you slice it, whether we provide the same level of service now or not, we're still saving the town money, and it is our responsibility as citizens of Wareham to transport our children safely. That brings my next point. Before I vote on this, I wanna know what those perimeters are. I mean, we have got a gazillion kids at Woods of Wareham. We're gonna have those fifth grade kids at Woods of Wareham walking down Route 6 after they piled the snow five feet tall with no sidewalks? I can't in good conscience vote for that. I can't.
Do you wanna be interrupted? Dr. Ravinevich would like to say something. It's up to you.
Well, let me finish, and then you can tear me apart later. Then, in terms of traffic, this is on such a tight schedule, you're gonna have a gazillion parents dropping off kids. You're gonna have, the buses won't even be able, the buses won't even be able to get into the driveway. There are gonna be so many cars out there. So better open up Kennedy Drive because you're gonna need that exit. I don't know, there's a whole lot of reasons why I can't support this. However, my rational brain has gotta kick in at some point in time. I understand that. This is all emotional for me. I just can't, I can't stand the picture of a fifth grade kid walking to school down Route 6. I just can't stand that picture in my brain, given the fact that I've got two grandsons that are just about that age. Thank you for listening.
Dr. Ravinevich?
Respectfully, I'd like to withdraw this recommendation at this time until after town meeting, and we know what our numbers are. There's been enough said on it.
Well, I don't know if that's necessary, but...
I think so.
Mike?
Whether he does that or not, I think Rhonda's and Kenny's point is taken about notifying the parents. And this is a real possibility. I mean, they should be notified and that this is what the expectation could be just beforehand.
I have tremendous respect for everybody at this table. And the reality is, there is nothing preventing us from waiting to take action until after town meeting. And we shouldn't have any illusions about the fiscal situation changing between now and town meeting for the better, could change for the worse. I'm not sure why Dr. Ravinevich has made that statement. It doesn't diminish the work that he and Jeff have done in...
Absolutely.
...in presenting this option to us. But I was sitting here wondering if I would even get a motion anyway. So I just look at this, therefore, as something we have in our back pocket, and if we have to use it, we have to use it, and we can revisit it at another time. So the work has not been in vain. And, but I think, my own personal opinion is, we need to, we need to act promptly once we know for certain the dollars that we've got so the parents can anticipate and...
I absolutely agree. And I don't want this decision to be made based on my emotional outburst because, you know, when the smoke settles, my rationality is gonna kick in. I know what the situation is.
It's fine, Cliff. I don't have any problem. As I said, it didn't sound like I was gonna get a motion anyway.
Rhonda?
So just two recommendations because I agree that this is, I feel, a viable option and one of the best ones that we've had over all of the conversations that we had. This has, what you've created here is the least, the least amount of impact when it comes to the number of students, as well as solves the huge issue that we had when moving the fifth grade to the middle school. It solves that, it solves that problem. So again, I think it's phenomenal. And I think that we will probably need to, we will have to take a vote on this. My suggestion, though, when we talk about this and when we talk about the students that are impacted, I'd like us to move away from that inside one mile we'll walk because we know, and I think that's where you get the emotional side of this, is that we know that there, in some places, that's just not possible. Like, we are not gonna have, not any sane parent will have their child walk down Route 6 or in a snowstorm there. So if we can talk about it in a way of alternative transportation to school or something like that, because I think that that's when we start having conversations around what, not that we have to have it here, but people start having conversations on carpooling or different ways to do it instead of just constantly saying that they're gonna have to walk. And I don't know if that's because that's legally at the state level, but again, if we could just talk about it in that term. And then the other thing is, is being able to get information from the parents that are affected, I think, only makes our argument stronger when we go to town meeting. And that's the only reason why I think that we should try to get that before town meeting or within town meeting, because it allows people to have a voice and also to hear from us, the reason why we're doing this. So then, all of a sudden, when it just, the hammer comes down and it happens, that people are shocked and you didn't tell me and I didn't have a chance to weigh in. Giving people a chance to weigh in and talk about it, I think, then softens the blow when a hard decision like this needs to be made. So I just wanted to make those two comments.
We have had public hearings addressing the walking issue.
Right. We have had public hearings. They've been very, very high level, very generic, and not specific to, and also not with this three-tier plan. Again, I just think that you and Dr. Ravinevich have just gone, you know, above and beyond time and time again and gotten it to a very tight, very clear, wonderful plan. And that is what I think, I think it's much more clearer now. We have something specific to talk about instead of just high level. It's just a recommendation.
Unless anybody objects, I'd like to thank Mr. Tetro for being here this evening, and we'll move on to the enrollment report.
Thank you. Mr. Tetro has to be at the garage sometime before seven tomorrow morning.
I'll be here till at least the next...
Oh, could we, while Mr. Tetro is here, as one of the parts of my report?
Oh, yes. Let's please do that.
So maybe you have, we may have a question about this. So I don't know if this is in your package or not, but this is a letter that, yes, this document...
Everybody, this was passed out.
This is a letter to myself, to Mr. Sullivan, the TA, Wareham School Committee, and Wareham Board of Selectmen, from Jeff Tetro, about the award of the bid. One of the items, if you recall, from the last October's town meeting, there was a sum of money of $55,000 that was part of a capital appropriation for buying used or new vehicles. And at the town meeting before April of '12, there was a sum of money, $60,000, that was encumbered in the revolving account to purchase vehicles. We bought approximately $25,000 worth, leaving $35,000. So the $35,000 plus the $55,000 gave us $90,000 to spend on used vehicles. We did a bid, and we had a vendor that came in and offered us these three vehicles, all of 2007. So they are six-year-old vehicles with the mileage that you see here for a total of And actually, in the bid, it was gonna cost us more. We didn't have the money. And he would take in trade two of our out-of-service obsolete school buses that have been taken off the road and are just sitting at the garage and are not being currently used, and they're no longer registered, in fact. So we would remove two vehicles that are, what age are those vehicles, do you know?
They're both 98s.
98s. So two vehicles that are 98 would be traded in along with the $90,000 in order to purchase these three vehicles. And Jeff, according to what you know about these, will our fleet be in better shape after we get these three vehicles than before?
Of course. There's gonna be less, less maintenance with, I mean, granted, they're still used buses, but in the, in the bid we put out, there were some specific requirements that had to be met before we took them, including services and tires and some heavy-duty maintenance type stuff that before we took delivery would have to be done. So off the bat, those big items at 60, 70,000 miles that we do now wouldn't have to be done for a while. Obviously, we're gonna be upgrading the average age of the fleet. It'd also currently look identical with a few minor cosmetic tweaks, but they would be transit-style buses consistent with what our fleet currently looks like.
And because of the purchasing regulations, this is a Board of Selectmen vote in order to award this bid. So I believe what we would be looking for is a recommendation from you to the Board of Selectmen or to the TA to move this forward.
Okay. Questions? Mike?
This is already accounted for and encumbered.
That is correct. The money exists.
Yeah, and we've, in town meeting, encumbered it. It's just weird that we have to go to the Board of Selectmen because that's just the process.
To award the bid in order to, we went out, because it was over $25,000, he had to go up to bid.
Yeah.
You all set?
Yeah.
Anybody else?
This is a lot easier for me than the last subject.
Exactly. I always thought 77 was sacred. Where'd they, where'd they fit the two extra seats? They make the bus longer?
They extended the back end of the bus.
It's literally just a little bit longer.
It's 24 inches longer to accommodate that one extra seat.
Wow, interesting.
Can we make them longer to accommodate 130 students?
Thank you, Rhonda.
An 83-passenger vehicle for the streets of Wareham is not an ideal vehicle for certain parts of town, certainly.
I bet.
There was a few years ago, I believe, well before, I think, two or three transportation directors, managers before, where the requirement was 65-passenger vehicles. In this town, with the way the streets are, that's an ideal situation, 65 passengers. But obviously, with time goes on, you go up to 77. I would not normally, under any circumstance, recommend 83-passengers. That bus would have to be used, not downtown. It would be very specific where a bus of that size would go. 77 is pushing it downtown now.
Yeah.
So it's not ideal, you know, it's an opportunity we have to get an upgrade, and I do think in this one case, it would possibly be very good to use on some of our bigger athletic events as well. It's an opportunity to get a vehicle that's newer and in better condition than we currently have, and I don't think one vehicle that size would have a great impact. But I wouldn't recommend a fleet of them, absolutely not. Not the Midwest.
Amen. Any other questions? Okay, so we're looking for a vote to recommend to the Board of Selectmen.
To endorse, or whatever you wanna call it.
Recommend, yeah. The purchase of these three vehicles for a total...
$90,000.
Price of $90,000. I'll take a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed, abstain? 5-0-0? Thank you, Jeff. That looks like another good achievement.
Now you can go.
Yes, good night. Park?
Enrollment.
Sorry, yeah.
So the enrollment figures, and I don't wanna, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time in these documents. These are the kind of things that, you know, looking through, I'm sure you can read on your own. But if you go to the third page in the enrollment document and where it says Wareham Mass Projected Enrollment from 2012 through 2022, you'll see that, you know, the chart kinda, it levels off. So we're at 2863 now, and that does not count choice students, it does not count state wards. This is the way they calculate it from the state. And it eventually levels out. So it goes down to about 2750 and then down to 2727. And that's just natural following the birth rate. There's another page that shows you the birth rate going up and down and what the projections are and how they came up with it. The front page tells you that they were 11 students off in their, for the 2012-13 school year. You know, enrollment projections are a science. NSDAQ does it as part of their service to us. We belong to them. It's just one measure. When you go to do a building, for instance, you have to put your enrollment in, and they do their own as well. So I don't know if there are any questions on this particular document.
Yes. You said it didn't, didn't take into consideration choice?
It does not, no.
So those are, those are numbers based on, based on the assumption that everybody would come here? Is that correct?
No. What I'm trying to say is, it doesn't factor in the in-migration of choice.
Okay, but what about out?
So currently, there are 40 coming in.
Right. What about out?
And it doesn't either. So there's 60 going out, I believe.
Seventy.
Seventy. So there's about a 30 difference.
Okay.
So it could get worse with more choice.
So you saw, right, and the assumption is that everybody would come here?
Yes.
Right, okay.
Any other questions on this document? I, I don't think we should go to the mat for these numbers. The reason they smoothed out is because they're formula-based. And the formula bases are only good as the information that's put in, and it is what it is. But I wouldn't go to the bank on these numbers, one way or the other.
It says here, in-migration may pick up in two or three years, and that's a function of the economy. When housing starts, you know, when you have land in an area and more housing starts and developments, you know, you could have more families moving in, but it does not factor that in right now.
What shouldn't be lost on people is the state of Massachusetts is losing population. Wareham is losing population.
Cape Cod.
Cape Cod is losing population.
Yep.
And the total number of students, and this was, this was pretty dramatic, the total number of students available even for us to teach, forget about where they choose to go, was 300 less than it was just like 10 years ago or something like that.
That's correct.
So it's, that's, that fact is the biggest actual impact on our school district. Sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, the next grouping of documents called the School Attending Report is something that Michelle puts together every year around this time of year. And I would like to call your attention to the one page back and front called the School Attending Six-Year Data. And number one, if we look at the top, the Regional Vocational Technical School, that is Upper Cape, you can see that starting in 2007, '08, we had 180... we had one hundred and eighty-one students attending. Today, we have two hundred and thirty-four. And I don't know exactly who I was having the conversation with, but somebody asked me about, you know, if you have X number of seats available, why are more coming from Wareham? It's because they use this way to rank order the applicants. And so if they have more applicants than they have spaces, then they will fill up their seats every year. And a higher percentage of those applicants are coming from Wareham and are qualifying, and therefore, these numbers keep rising.
Just FYI, everybody should know. If you go back to the early two thousands, in other words, another five years, the numbers were in the two thirties, two forties. So this has been a dip, and now it's back up to what it used to be.
I believe at one point, there was actually a certain number of seats available per district. That changed when the new formula for who to accept came into effect.
When they became concerned about MCAS.
Yes. That is correct. But I think we also have to look upon it as in an economy where people have a choice about where to go. Some of our Cape towns are looking at competition from charter schools. Our competition comes from the regional vocational tech and out-of-district choice. And Dr. Sylvia, in his comments earlier, talking about course offerings and so forth, and even Principal Palladino, when he talked about not knowing what he could offer depending on the staffing. If we are continuing to not fund what we say we need to keep the level of service we have, then programming is affected because you don't have the staff. And you finally get to a point where one of the smaller schools in the district now, when you look at the four big schools, is the high school. We will have eight hundred and eighty children at the middle school, and there'll be about six hundred and fifteen children at the high school. And each of the elementary schools had six fifteen. They'll go down about one hundred and fifteen students were losing the fifth grade. But... So that's where the competition is coming. And it's very hard to compete when you're losing programs rather than building programs. So, you know, these are sobering numbers. But I believe the chairman and myself both mentioned last year, when we were talking about why we needed the overrides and the debt exclusion, was to stop folks from making the decision to leave because we couldn't offer things. So I think we have to continue to look at how to make what we have better with what we have, and we have to go after the resources so that we have enough to offer what we need. You know, it's a two-pronged attack. Otherwise, this isn't going to stop. Because the other schools are going down. The number of potential students in those places are going down. And so if they want to fill their seats, there'll be more seats available for Wareham. And every time that happens, then our assessment goes up. So, you know, we... Again, any questions on these two papers? And I'll be happy either tonight on emails or at the next meeting.
Ken?
Just a question, Dr. Rabinovich. Are there four current schools, districts that are involved? Five?
Five districts that go to Upper Cape.
So is it safe to say that we represent more than twenty percent of their enrollment?
Yes. I believe their total enrollment is about six fifty. So we're about a third of their enrollment.
And final question is, do you know... Is there a cap on how many students they will accept from Wareham? Or I think I heard you say, say, I don't even know one of the other schools, Bourne, or something decides... Or maybe thirty or forty kids from Bourne don't go the following year. They open that up to anybody or Wareham?
To anybody by rank order on that list. So we have, for ninth graders right now, there are sixty-seven children who are attending Upper Cape as freshmen this year. There were fifty-five from the year before, fifty-four. So it went up by about twelve students. And that meant that other places lost students that were going there. In fact, I believe when Dr. Sylvia called and talked with the superintendent in Falmouth, he came back to say to me that their assessment went down by five hundred thousand dollars because they have fewer students attending than they had before. Ours has gone up by four hundred thousand. It came down a hundred thousand. That has been added to our bottom line by the town administrator. But because our numbers have gone up. And so the math goes from there. You know, the other thing, of course, is to look at the choice numbers. And then if you look at this other paper, you'll see where those choice students go. You know, there are thirty-five attending Old Rochester going from grade seven to twelve. And four years ago, Old Rochester did not take any choice students. That only started approximately three years ago. And that's when these numbers started. The choice out-of-district choice went in two thousand seven from twelve students. There were thirteen in eight, nine. Then in nine, ten, it went to twenty-two. Then it went to thirty. And so that's the year that they started taking choice, was nine, ten. So it went from twenty-two in nine, ten to sixty-three in twelve, thirteen. And as other districts lose enrollment, they will try to attract more students. So, you know, this is where our marketing and DECA program maybe can help us, that we need to market Wareham High School.
Well... Cliff?
One of the basic problems...
Were you finished, Ken?
Thank you for the answer.
One of the basic problems is its programming. They still have programming. I mean, they've got a drama group over up the road. That's unbelievable. They have a music program that, you know, is world-class. They've got a diversity of programming that slowly but surely we chip away at because of the bottom line. So I don't know what the answer to that is. I really don't. Wish I did.
Fund the schools appropriately.
Anybody else? Just a couple of quick comments. My reaction to this was primarily the difference between the total students available now is thirty-three oh five. And just six years ago, it was thirty-six twenty-four. So that's the biggest number on this whole list. Upper Cape is an issue. It's an issue primarily because of cost. It's going back to historically what it's been anyway. I think one of the reasons we need to compete and to give Scott the tools to compete is because there's actually a perception that frankly, the data says is not valid. The perception is that if they go to Upper Cape, they're going to get a skill that is going to make it easier for them to get a job and to have some kind of independent lifestyle, et cetera. The truth of the matter is, unless they go on to college, they're twice as likely to be unemployed as people who go to college and get a college degree. Literally, twice as likely to be unemployed. So going to Upper Cape is not a solution to an independent lifestyle. And getting a great education at Wareham High School is a much better choice for most students. But the perception is they're getting a skill. So the only thing that I see as a problem on this list is the out-of-district choice. And there, there is the... At least the perception that somehow going to ORR or Bourne, which is another major choice location, is they're going to get more programs and more rigor. And of course, the more we talk about reducing programming, the more we unfortunately exacerbate the perception that that's a good choice on the part of parents. But all the rest of this stuff is really small potatoes, with the exception, of course, of private school education... Excuse me. Private special education, which is... I mean, that's a function of need of the students, and it's a huge cost that Bob has to manage. But the biggest number is there's simply fewer students to educate. That's what it really comes down to that live in Wareham. Can we move on?
We can. The student...
I'm sorry. I was asking the committee.
Okay. I'm sorry.
That's the paradox. The more we talk about it, the more we rise the perception.
Right. Exactly. Which means we need to talk about the good things.
That's exactly right, which is what I said earlier.
Right. I agree with you. Go ahead, Derek.
The student attendance is, again, something that we do at this time of the year to make sure the committee has. The top part does a comparison of where we are from last year to this year. And, you know, DeCA is right about right where they were. Mine is down point three percent. Hammond, of course, you know, we don't have attendance this year because we don't have children there. And point eight at the middle school percent down from where we were. Ninety-three point eight. We're actually a little bit better at the high school, but there's work to go because we need to have... That should be at ninety-five percent. The cooperative has improved quite a bit in their attendance. Well, they're over the ninety-five percent now when they weren't before.
They have improved.
Yes.
Absolutely. Kudos to Kathy.
And always a quandary is very young children, preschool, illnesses and such. It's a smaller population, so that's... You know, we'd like to see it better, but it's at ninety-three point three. And West Academy with just fifteen or sixteen children, when you have a case where somebody is ill and hospitalized or out, can really hurt your percentage. So one or two people can affect that greatly. Yes, Mike?
What is the acronym ADM?
Average student membership.
Thank you. For sure.
Yeah. West February looks awful.
Yeah.
Anything else on the attendance report? Okay. Thank you. You all set?
Well, the next one goes... If you want me to just continue down?
Oh, yeah. Sorry. Should refer back more often. Park?
You've heard about Park before. I'm not going to spend a lot of time. But what I would hope that you would do is that from the documents I gave you, you would go on to the website and start reading yourself. And if you particularly are interested in the technology component, because one of the things that has to happen is these assessments that Scott was talking about, or Ms. Mars, both the end-of-the-course assessment and the performance assessment that happens during the year have to happen online. And what they're looking for is to have one grade at least test at a time and all students... So at the middle school, where you have two hundred and twenty-five sixth graders, and you only have two classrooms of iPads... And by the way, the only devices in the district that meet the recommended requirements, recommendations for PAC, are our iPads.
You're kidding.
No. Because you need Windows Seven, and we're on XP.
But iPads don't have Windows Seven.
No. But the OS Six works for it. And the resolution and everything else. And bandwidth. So I did a quick... Of course, I'm not going to find the paper while I wrote it down. So in order for us... The test doesn't begin next September, but it does the following year. In order for us to be able to test one grade at a time at each one of our buildings, you need to build into your budget next year when you are doing fiscal fifteen, an extra two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Four iPads.
Whoa, 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 whoa. iPads are the only alternative? We should be all buy Apple stock?
No. I'm sure they will give us other things. But again, if you go online, that is the one that works, what we have now.
So they can't be done on a computer... A computer lab won't work?
Yes. If you have a new computer lab that has the correct amount of RAM and so forth and so on. And I'm not going to pretend to know all...
That's more money because you're just going to have to put... You're putting into old equipment. What you're doing is the thing you're...
I understand.
So all I'm saying is...
About software.
And I have been praying for a long time that the state is going to do as I believe the state of Maine did. They went out on a statewide bond to buy so that every... Whatever grade they started at, grade three? Four? I can't see it. I don't have my glasses on. Did laptops. And, you know, you're going to need that kind of an initiative because, you know, we're talking a million seven, folks. This is another, you know, figure, three hundred thousand dollars.
So the... How much is in the bond for this coming town meeting? That's only about fifty thousand?
Fifty thousand for technology. But that is to finish...
That's the infrastructure.
Yes. To finish the project of getting the wireless everywhere in the buildings.
So that's necessary, but only because...
That is correct. And the other money that is in the budget so that we have the higher-level business class to have bandwidth is something that's now part of our budget. We used to get, you know, the box for free from Comcast, and it worked when we only had twenty-five people on it. But now, if we want to put two hundred people on it, you need the much larger bandwidth. And so, you know, this is going to cost money. And so far, like I said, they've been sending out all these communications. I think I sent Jan the thing about, you know, watching some webinars on this stuff. But...
Is this an unfunded mandate?
It appears to be at this moment, unless the governor has some tricks up his sleeve or...
He's holding it back.
Maybe they've...
It's going to be Christmas present.
Right. Maybe they've held all this R triple T money in reserve to help buy us all this technology.
I have a bridge to sell you then.
Right. So, you know, I just wanted people to know, and I really recommend that you go on the website. You know, I'm not going to read the paperwork, and spend some time because it is the future of assessment.
One year from September.
Yes. Understood. So this needs to be in the...
Future's a relative term.
This is the FY fifteen budget, which will be here before we know it. A year from September. Yes. Okay.
The good news is we've already done the recommendation to the town administrator to award the bid, which is the second item in my report. And just as information at this point, we don't have a written document to give you. But the curriculum office has been moved into an office at the middle school rather than the Everett Center because of the water leakage from the roof and the fact that... You may remember when I went to town meeting and asked for some CPC money to study the issue so that we could be preemptive. Unfortunately, that was turned down. So now we've had to move one department out. And I believe we're doing an air quality test tomorrow, and we'll find out whether we need to move Student Services. Not that we know where we would move them at this point. But so that's just a progress report that if you're looking for the curriculum office, they're at the middle school this morning. Can move them to the Boys and Girls Club. Second floor. Not a bad idea.
You all set?
Yeah.
Yes. I guess I'm unfinished.
Great. Thank you. It's about ten minutes to ten. I'll take a motion to go past ten o'clock. The good news is Rhonda doesn't need... Anticipate needing much time. And then we will go into executive sessions and come out just to adjourn. So can I have a... So can I have a motion to go beyond 10 o'clock, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stained? 5-0-0. You can mark that a reluctant 5-0-0, so...
Well, I should have voted no.
You should have.
Well, because of the Yennerge report for the middle school, it's much higher now, and it must be because of violent...
Rhonda.
He's not budget-conscious.
Yes, he is budget-conscious, isn't he?
All right. Just to give you a quick update on the applications that have come in so far, I got an update from Rain Associates. So right now, there are currently 15 completed applications. An additional five applications have been started but not completed. So basically, a completed application means someone has applied and has gone through the screening process that Rain Associates have put forward, and that they are now official applicants that then will be given to us. Another five have been started but not completed, and they will continue to follow up with another seven contacts that were made at the National Conference of Education in Los Angeles. Okay, so, but we have 15, what they're saying are qualified applicants that will come in front of us so far.
Did you get a sense from them as to whether these numbers are good, bad, abnormal, and how they feel about the overall quality of the applicants?
Those are terrible.
No, I haven't gone there, just because they're still in the process of doing it. But I think, but if you go back to when we first started working with them, they said that, you know, in some of the locations they worked at, they had upwards of 40 applicants, and in other, you know, there was between 25, you know, around, around there. But I haven't, I did not want to go into any detail with them on the applications at this point.
I may have misinterpreted. So does this mean they haven't applied any filter to any of them?
Fifteen.
So fifteen...
They've gone through the process.
Fifteen have gone through the first phase of filtering with Rain Associates.
But have they rejected any?
I'm sure they have.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
So they've actually passed one of the filters?
Yes.
The first level filter?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, okay. So any questions on where we stand right now? Again, the application deadline for submissions are, is April 11th. So they are still accepting the applications. And I forgot to tell you, there are two sitting superintendents or acting superintendents that they're also looking at, so add two on to that. So 15 that have gone through the application, another five that are just starting the application, another seven that they're following up with that they met in Los Angeles, and two that they're talking to that have either been recommended by someone here in Massachusetts that they're talking to also. So, okay? Any questions on that piece? Okay. There were two documents that were left on, in front of you. One was, we did have a late submission for the nonprofit screening committee member. And so you have that person's letter in front of you. Just to let the group know, overall, for the one position of principals, we had three principals apply. For the two Wareham Public Schools staff that are slated to be on the committee, we only had two. One nonprofit for the one position we had, one business for the one business we had, and then six parents/citizens-at-large for the three positions available. So again, even though with the communication and all the pieces that we put out there, there wasn't a large pool of applicants that came in, but I was happy with the applicants that we did receive. So the last document you have in front of you is my recommendation for the superintendent search, the screening committee members. I put proposed on here because I do want it to be a vote of the committee. But for Board of Selectmen, Steve Holmes, Town Administrator Derrick Sullivan, Finance Committee, I put Donna Brogge or her appointee. I didn't have a chance to talk to her, but initially she said that she would be the person on there, but she might want to appoint someone else from the FINCOM. Myself from the School Committee, the Union President Brian Fitzgerald, those were all appointed positions, if you remember. So getting into the letter of interest, for the principals, recommending Scott Palladino. For Wareham Public Schools staff, Christina Kuntz, as well as Stacy Rogers. For the business rep, Linda Burke. Nonprofit rep, Laura Prisco. And then the three parents/citizens-at-large would be Jesse Clements, Lisa Irish, and Jamie Pelletier. That is the recommendation that I'm putting in front of the board, and I will ask for a motion for discussion for these recommended, for the recommended screening committee.
Anybody have questions or comments before we put it to a motion?
Okay, then I'll...
Cliff?
The only comment I have, and that's fine, I'll vote for all of these. But the only comment I have is, on the principals, Joan Siemens is the senior principal.
Okay.
I felt she was pretty noteworthy, too, from her letter, but...
And I, and I, you know, certainly, you know, I think the world's to Scott, so this is not an anti-Scott. And you could have them both for all I care, but...
And it's also not an anti-Joe.
Right, exactly.
Right. Yeah, what I tried to do when looking at all of the applications is I did try to create a diverse group that could be well-represented of, of the district. And so I looked at things like what skill set that they brought to the table, what population they, you know, would, would serve, things like that. There were several factors that went into it, but...
That's fine. I'm sure we accept the recommendation of the chair.
I'll take a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? 5-0-0.
Okay, just to let, thank you very much, everyone. I appreciate for just the timeliness and everyone taking a look at everything, and we're really trying to keep this, this whole entire process on track. To let you know, the next step is for me to send an email out to the screening committee asking for availability. You'll see in the paragraph underneath, this is something that Rain Associates put together for us, and I tweaked a little bit, but it's in front of you, really what we're going to ask the committee to do. So there's going to be three meetings that we're going to ask the committee to commit to. The first one is just a half an hour meeting to kind of go over the process. The second meeting is where the committee is going to be able to look at sample questions and suggest changes to those questions or additional questions that they would like to ask of the candidates. And then the last one is a Saturday meeting probably, where we'll actually do a round robin, they'll actually be part of the interview process for the, for the initial candidates. And that's, will probably take about six hours. And then we'll be probably at the same time, so they'll go through us, then they'll go to this group. What the group will be responsible for is providing to us, they're not going to provide to us in rank order, these candidates, who they recommend, who they don't, but they're going to talk about the strengths and weaknesses. The committee is going to look at the strengths and weaknesses of each one of the candidates. That will come back to us. So as we're interviewing and trying to narrow it down to the final candidates, that will go into our deliberations. Any questions on the process of what we'll be doing after this point, once the committee is pulled together? Thank you very much.
I would like...
Mr. Chair, I just want to, I said it before, but the work that Rhonda has done on this is absolutely, what's the word I want? Absolutely phenomenal, and I appreciate it. You have provided this board with a lot of paperwork and documentation of everything you've done, and you should be commended on that.
I appreciate that, thank you.
I'll second that motion.
You're here.
Third.
Thanks, Scott.
Okay.
Okey-dokey.
Okey-dokey.
Strike that.
I don't spell it.
All right, I'll take a motion to go into executive session, please.
Do we, any other business?
Excuse me? Oh, is there any other business before the committee? Okay.
Would be reconvening?
Yes, but only to adjourn.
Only to adjourn?
Yes. Could I have that motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
You have to say for the purpose.
Oh, for the purpose of reviewing the minutes of February, I'm sorry, Michelle, what is it?
13.
13, and for collective bargaining. Thank you, Michelle.
So moved.
Second.
Ken?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Yes, we're in executive session. Thank you. Let's go find a room reasonably quickly.
Jamie, do you want, do you guys want to copy this?